I will call this meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission to order and ask that everyone silence their devices, please. Mark, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is requested that members of the public hold their comments on agenda items to when they are considered. If content is disruptive or disrespectful to commissioners, staff, or members of the public, the individual will be told to stop and to sit down. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Speakers, please come to the podium, write your name on the list and state it for the record. First speaker, please.
Hello. I'm back again. My name's Sherri Andrews, and I live at the corner of Riverview and Meadowview. I've been there almost four years, and I've also been coming to this valley for about 40 years. And when I got notice of this last time, it was within two days of the meeting. None of my neighbors were advised, so this time we're making sure our neighborhood knows. And my issue is several. One, traffic, and some of these we've discussed or brought up last time.
Do I have to mic from home?
Sure. Traffic is a big issue. As we know, Riverview gets very busy at 395, Dresslerville and Longview, as well as there's a lot of -- there's only eight houses on my street, and people buzz through there all the time. Water is a major issue, and several people have talked about that before. The lot sizes in this development are right next to the original ranchos, which are between one acre and four acres, and I don't think that's appropriate for this type of development. And my other issue is the cost of the housing, the layouts, the size of the houses, and prior to today, I've never seen or heard anything of that. But thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. I would like to announce to those who are here for this project that this item was continued to this date from the last meeting. However, the applicant is not ready to present, and the project will be re-noticed at a later date, so we will not be hearing this project at this meeting. AJ, or Tom, do you want to address the public on this?
This is AJ Haynes with the District Attorney's Office. It's my understanding that the applicant was instructed to get a revised traffic study, and that has not been completed at this time for the project near Riverview Drive. And so since they are not prepared to present that revised traffic study to the board today, it was not included on today's agenda, there will be a subsequent meeting when they complete their traffic study, and noticing will go out in accordance with county code. It'll be published in the paper. It'll also be posted on-site and mailed to residents who are within the noticing area.
Why weren't we notified? Our time is valuable, awesome. Why isn't it on this agenda? And it's on the agenda.
This is AJ Haynes again for the record. The agenda is posted ahead of the meeting, and the Riverview project is not on the agenda. And so that is the method of notice that was provided. It was published -- the agenda was published and also posted on the county's website.
When was it posted?
Standard posting is about 10 days before the Planning Commission in the Record Courier and on the county's website. AJ?
Madam Chair, if I may, and just to clarify, your comments related to the public comment that was offered initially, which dealt with the Riverview project that had been continued from the last Planning Commission meeting, we're not speaking regarding the project that's being proposed on Vicki Lane that is included in the agenda and that will be discussed at this meeting. So just to clarify, in case there was some confusion about which projects we were talking about.
Okay. To be clear, we are talking about the Vicki Lane project, or just west of Vicki Lane? Am I on the right page?
No. No, the one that was continued from today is the project that is on Dresslerville and Main.
No, I want to talk about the project just west of Vicki Lane, north of North Santa Barbara.
Okay, that will be heard today, and those comments will be heard when we address that project later on in the meeting.
Later on in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Al Brown, and I am the chairman of the AAC Committee, the Airport Advisory Committee. I am here basically to answer any questions you might have in regards to how some of the developments might interact with the airport. As many of you know, we have been dealing with a management transition at our airport, who has been really working half-time at the airport and half-time at the county in accounts payable and in finance. And while Heather is doing a great job, this has left little time for things such as dealing with noise complaints and things like this. So for about the last six months, I have been handling this stuff and trying to communicate with folks in the neighborhoods surrounding the airport, including Saratoga Springs. And so one of my concerns when I saw about this development that was coming up, and I'm not here to stop anybody from doing anything, I'm not here to endorse a project or otherwise stand in the way, but I wanted to make sure you knew that I stand by, ready to help you with any questions you might have about issuing an navigation easement or the types of things that we're going to find necessary so that people who buy the properties are not -- are kept informed, rather, about the potential for aircraft noise. Because one thing that I have found about folks that live around the airport, while many of them are clear that they knew they were buying a house near an airport, I hear comments such as, "I never knew there was going to be this much traffic," and "Why aren't they obeying the flight routes and the flight paths that they're supposed to?" and these types of things. So I think it's imperative that we have proper disclosures for people that buy real estate around the airport, and if I can help you with that, I'm glad to do it. Again, my name is Al Brown. Maureen, you have my email. You're welcome to email me, call me anytime, and if I don't know something, I'll certainly look into it and find out for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the report you submitted.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Ellie Waller. I attended the strategic planning meeting last night and was pleased to see a great turnout, better than what was in the valley, in my opinion. Hoping financial and personnel resources can be secured for future success, a budget to meet the workload is challenging. A plan is only as good as the ability to achieve the goals. I'm looking forward to the Title 20 changes coming forward and various sections being updated sooner than later. My opinion is there are way too many loopholes that make it difficult to have clear and concise motions when reviewing for recommendation by this body for approval or denial of projects by the Board of Commissioners. Interpretation sometimes is challenging. I look forward to code enforcement tightening up of that language and possibly new terms and definitions to provide additional clarity. I look forward to the kickoff of the Master Plan 2025 efforts early next year. I'm hopeful, the broken record here, community plans and the valley and area plans in the Tahoe Township rise to the level importance as they were not adequately updated in 2020 to represent what the citizens might want for their unique areas. Loopholes for proposed development need to be extinguished through a proper update of these plans. Ordinance updates that govern specific plans need fresh look to avoid future mistakes of allowing a development to self-enforce, as evidenced by Clear Creek Tahoe, where visibly destroying an iconic view shed where homes should never have been built. These plans need to be updated and not piecemealed with the example of the hospital overlay necessary for the Barton Hospital Complex at Tahoe Douglas County at the old casino site. The casino quarter for sale certainly should have disclosed the zoning issue. And frankly, I hope sometime in the future, the Douglas County staff will be expanded to have a Tahoe Township dedicated staff under our Director of Community Development. We have problems with the -- my perception that the public is not heard through the TRPA being the first line of approval and us secondary here through planning and/or the Board of Commissioners. Another recent issue is Douglas County Code doesn't necessarily have to match International File Code as long as it doesn't violate the IFC. It can be more restrictive. And I'll close with, I'm confused about changes in the design review documentation, even though it only needs B.O.C.C. approval by resolution, why not come to you first as it affects your future decision-making? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is AJ Ursick, Vice Chairman of the AAC. Last night, we suggested a possible connection for the AAC to be involved in some of these projects. I was merely suggesting that the AAC be informed of proposed construction projects in the county so that the AAC can offer some assistance and be of service. I was not suggesting that the AAC be a level of approval. I was not suggesting that the AAC have any authority at all. I was merely suggesting that the Chairman of the AAC be contacted to give an opinion of a proposed project. Mr. Delair complained that he'd have to wait for another month to hear from the AAC. This is not true. He was not willing to hear nor work with the AAC to discover a meaningful level of cooperation. Example, application DP 22-0207. Mr. Delair was not aware that the project is located directly under the departure route for runway 34, primarily used for jet traffic. Additionally, he admitted that he was not aware of a document entitled "Navigation Easement." Having experienced noise complaints from neighboring communities, the AAC was wanting to merely advise these characteristics in order to be of some assistance to the Planning Commission. How the Planning Commission utilizes this information is up to the Commission. The AAC was only attempting to work together with other committees of the county. I believe that the massive package, in the spirit of recycling, I'll return it, the massive package by Mr. Delair delivering that was over the top. A sort of attitude is, "You want to have a say? Okay, here it is, read it." Again, our only hope was to show a level of teamwork with the county, to help give information that may be useful in discussions regarding proposed projects. Mr. Delair sarcastically indicated that what we suggested to do with have proposed project was wait another month while the AAC deliberates the project. Of course, this is absurd. A simple phone call to our Chairman would have sufficed. We are not suggesting that a full AAC Board member, including an agenda item, be included for our review, only just a call to determine if there's anything related to the airport that may be useful. Advanced notice for the AAC and the airport manager can be prepared and be prepared to expect any comments from the community. There's nothing magical about the blue circle. Airplanes affect everybody in the county. I found his presentation to be distasteful.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Benjamin Reese, and I'm a resident of Douglas County on the north side. I'm an airport user. I'm very much involved with the daily operations of our improvements that have been made, assisting our airport management and AAC members in trying to get things rolling in the right direction. We've been getting a lot of complaints from noise abatement procedures being violated or maybe residents who are not aware of the airport traffic zones, and this is going to be an ongoing problem as our valley increases in population. I like the idea of the one-acre building sites north of Johnson Lane. I think that's great use of that land, but it is in the departure and arrival zone of the aircraft. And because of our high-density altitudes, which means that the temperatures are high, our altitude is also high comparatively, we can reach an altitude of 9,000 feet in the morning hours before noon, just at the ground. That means aircraft can't climb as fast as they would on normal airports, and many residents aren't aware of this. So they need to be made aware in their disclosures in the county process that there will be aircraft that will be flying around occasionally. If they become bothersome, you know, like a regular pilot is doing something on a regular basis, we're on top of that. And we take these complaints very seriously because they're not just complaints about noise. If an aircraft has a problem, it could be in a dangerous position near residents, and we don't want to see that happen. So we need to be involved at the AAC level to help make sure that people are notified and that there are no incursions or mistakes that could be made. And this takes cooperation, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Are there any others for public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And I will say that I found Mr. Ursick's comments inappropriate, and I will be speaking with Mr. Brown, the Chair of the Airport Advisory Committee, about them. There are other comments from Planning Commissioners. Seeing none, we will go back to our agenda. Approval of our agenda for possible action. Planning Commission reserves the right to take items in a different order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that the agenda be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mark, a second by David. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make sure we do note for the public in attendance now that the agenda item that we continued at the last meeting to a date certain, which would be today, as AJ said, will be re-noticed. This is the Plan Development Tentative Subdivision Map, application DP 23-0090, and the Zoning Amendment Map, application DP 23-0091. So those will be continued until a later date, and as AJ said, they will be noticed in the newspaper and in other various forums, and there will be a mailed notice when that meeting occurs, with that meeting occurs in November or December at a future date.
So noted. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And the minutes. Is there any discussion, any corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Bryce. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect that I abstained from voting since I was not at the last meeting.
Minutes will reflect that. Thank you, Mark. We'll move to public hearings, and I would like to remind Planning Commissioners that if disclosures are going to be made on any items, that they be made right after the item is read into the record, not after any part of the item has been heard or discussed. Is that clear with everyone? Okay, thank you. For possible action, discussion on the following requests. Plan Development, PD, Tentative Subdivision Map, TSM Application, DP 22-0207, requesting to, A, establish a PD overlay zone for an 80-acre single-family residential subdivision site, and B, to subdivide 80 acres into 80 single-family residential lots, the smallest being 21,780 square feet with five common open space parcels. The subject parcel -- the subject property is located on the west side of Vicki Lane, north of North Santa Barbara Drive in the SFR 1 zoning district within the Johnson Lane Community Plan. The property owner is Bentley Family Limited Partnership, represented by Keith Rubin, R.O. Anderson Engineering, APN 1420-00-002-014. Case Planner Kate Marolos O'Neil presenting. I have a disclosure. I went out to the property a couple of times, and I have been back and forth with staff over the last few days to present different items to the Planning Commission, and other than that, that's my only disclosure. Is there anything Planning Commissioners have to disclose? No? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, excuse me, Kate Marolos O'Neil for the record, Douglas County Planning Division. Staff does recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for Plan Development Tentative Subdivision Map, application DP 22-0207, establishing a PD overlay zone for an 80-acre single-family residential subdivision and subdividing the 80 acres into 80 single-family residential lots. The property owner is Bentley Family Limited Partnership, today represented by Rob Anderson with R.O. Anderson Engineering. So I'd like to introduce Rob to proceed with the presentation.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Rob Anderson. I'm with Anderson Engineering. I am here today on behalf of Bentley Family Limited Partnership to present this application to you. We have prepared a -- oh, is it?
Yes.
Okay. We have prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and with your permission, Madam Chairman, I'd like to proceed. Very good. So currently. Oh, it's going. There you go. So as noted in the introduction read by the Chairman, this property is an 80-acre site located west of Vicki Lane extended. It is north of Saratoga Springs Development that we recognize and everybody's familiar with, north of Stephanie Lane. The site is, again, within the Johnson Lane planning area. It is -- the request today is for the tentative map and a plan development of 80 parcels, single-family residential parcels with a minimum parcel size of one-half acre. The subdivision is divided or proposed to be developed within four phases over the next 10 years is the plan. Who's clicking that? Are you clicking that?
Will you just stop clicking?
Yes, you click it. No, I'll click. Well, I might need your help, actually. All right.
Okay, here's the clicker.
All right, I'll click it. I'm thinking, golly, she's going kind of fast. So. You in a hurry?
Yes, yes, I want this over. Please.
Very good. With respect to the project, it is consistent, as proposed, it is consistent with Douglas County's master plan. Whoops.
See, that's why I was telling you.
I was just messing with you. Although I'm -- whoops. Now I don't know how to go ahead.
Can you just tell?
No, we gotta go back one. Actually, I think it works better here. Somebody was -- you had it before. Go down. Somebody back there suggested spacebar.
Anybody get a PowerPoint?
Better than I am anyways.
What are you trying to do? We're trying to go to, like, the next one.
Oh, so now you're doing it?
Oh, here we go.
There you go.
How do I get to the next?
They didn't set it up to do it.
Never mind. We'll just deal with it. In the lighter shaded one, the lot design and layout is shown. Maybe that is the next page. Here, this is -- no, I don't like it. There, we're missing some slides. Anyways, the lot design and layout, I'll show you the phasing plan, and we'll go through these details together. Here is the current land use and zoning that is shown. The green is single-family estates, which is the master plan designation, the existing and proposed zoning is there, single-family residential, one acres. Those exist today. There's no request, again, to change either the master plan or the zoning designation on the property. The request is to subdivide it in that purpose but utilize in the plan development provisions. The lot design and layout is here. There are numerous constraints on the property that affect it, and for that reason, we have used the plan development provisions in Douglas County Code to recognize those constraints and also find ways to minimize impacts to them. If you're familiar at all with this area, you recognize that the hot springs are located here, which is east of Vicki Lane. The drainage from those hot springs continues through a natural channel, through a series of, oh, well, it's just a natural channel, maybe some impoundment in certain times, and then continues off the site to the northwest. Additionally, immediately adjacent here, you'll see it in a subsequent slide, is Douglas County's North Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant and the large reservoir they use for winter storage. As a result of that, the way that reservoir was constructed is, in fact, elevated, and there is a risk, as there is with essentially any elevated reservoir, of a dam failure. We have performed a dam failure analysis that is included in the staff -- or I'm not sure if it's in the staff report, but it is referenced there, and it was provided with our application materials. That dam breach analysis shows that there is a potential, if the breach were to occur on the east side, that a portion of this ground in here, this portion of the site, would be inundated in a very short period of time, like minutes. So as a result of that dam break analysis, we've set that property or that portion of the site aside, again, just trying to deal with the constraints that are there. The development plan in a typical lot layout is shown here, both for a corner lot and also for just a regular interior lot, where there's a driveway, a structure, landscaping in the front adjacent to it, and then the setbacks are provided for. The development plan details are shown here with some of the fencing that's proposed, or alternative fencing types, being both wood slatted fences as well as some wrought iron in areas. The -- do it this way. The phasing plan is our next slide. The Phase 1 is shown in green, 2 in the kind of tan color, Phase 3 is in the purple, and then Phase 4 is in blue. The Phase 1 incorporates the large portion of the open space area that is provided through the central part of the project to preserve the area surrounding the drainage from the hot springs. The Phase 3 would encompass the area that is potentially subject to inundation from a dam breach, so that's this area here. So the first initial phase will accomplish a significant portion of the open space requirements within the project. Let's see. The open space areas here are shown again in this slide, very similar to the previous slide I'd shown you. The roads and The roads and traffic, a traffic study was prepared for the development and submitted with our materials. The conclusion of the study included that we were to install an R1 stop sign essentially at the improvement pavement markings for all ingressing project access drives that intersect with Vicki Lane, and that has, that has been incorporated in the project's conditions of approval. And then additionally, the staff has added a condition relative to improvements that are going to be required as a result of the condition of US Highway 395, the intersection of US Highway 395 and Stephanie Lane, that in the year 2042, that, that development will, or, excuse me, that intersection is projected to go to a level of Service E. A level of Service D is required under NDOT standards, and so we have been asked to participate in the cost of the pro-rata share contribution towards those improvements, which the applicant is prepared to agree to. The typical urban residential, or suburban residential road section are shown here, and then the minor collector road section for Vicki Lane is shown in the package as well. These improvements, these roads would be, or, excuse me, the roads within the development would be constructed with curb and gutter and sidewalk. It helps us, helps the project, and I think is a good design feature, because it allows us to control drainage from the lots, control drainage from the streets, and make sure they're directed properly. Vicki Lane, in contrast, is a rural road as it exists today. We intend to perpetuate that section. The drainage for the project is accomplished through storm flow routing. There's that, the large drainage basin, again, and this is a historic path of drainage through this open space. We do provide a culvert here underneath the road to transfer the water, perpetuate the water to the adjoining property has been done, and then there's a small, relatively detention or retention area here along this west boundary of the project for the purposes of mitigating any increase in impact and the runoff from the property. Relative to utilities, the, it is intended, and there's will serves from Douglas County Utilities to provide both sewer service and water service. Storm drainage, I believe, will be privately maintained, storm drainage improvements under the terms of the conditions of approval.
Give us the microphone, please.
So that is the largest part of it. I did want to speak a little bit back here in access to a question that came up, so I'm gonna just scroll back a bit. This one shows it well. So access is afforded by Vicki Lane, as I mentioned earlier. There are two access points into the development, very similar to other developments in the Johnson Lane area. Again, the streets are constructed to effectively a suburban standard with curb, gutter, and sidewalk, but there are two access points, one here and then one north of the hot springs drainage area. With that, I can conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I recognize there are a number of people that are here to speak and pose questions, and so, Madam Chairman, I would request permission to respond to those questions as they come up, or at the end, if you choose, I'll keep copious notes and be prepared to answer. Okay?
Questions from the Commission. Paul.
Thank you for your presentation on the slides. My question is on the exit of the Hot Springs perennial creek. It's not an intermittent stream. It's fed by springs, so it'll be always wet, and hence you have a great portion of the riparian area set back.
Correct.
To provide a view, I assume.
And a buffer.
For all those that trespass, not trespass, but pass, on the sidewalk, on the upper, what's the name of the upper street?
I think it's a Loop Street. Honestly, I don't know the name of the street.
Kalida.
Kalida?
On.
Kalido?
On Kalido, and on Kalido, there is a triangle, I see, in the open space. Is that an extension of the sidewalk that allows for pedestrian traffic to walk around and overlook the creek and then go back on the sidewalk?
I believe that is, that is the intention. They would provide access to that open space area and allow for it to be enjoyed by the residents of the development, if not the public. These are public streets.
And public right-of-way is for purposes of access to the viewing, the, what? I've been there, not in association with this particular application, but it is, it's not ugly.
No.
There's a lot of wildlife there, too.
Yes.
If I were to suggest that a culvert might be inconsistent with your intention to have that open space view, and rather, a bridge may be much better in terms of both the ambience for the neighbors, as well as anyone that walks to view the open space, would you be object, object to that?
It depends how you define a bridge. So if we define a bridge similar to what we've defined those types of crossings, for example, on crossings of the Martin Slough, where Buckeye Road crosses it, Mona Vista Avenue crosses it, let's see, Zeroleen Road, it actually is done in a pipe, Gilman Avenue is an example on Martin Slough, which also very scenic and very historic channel, generally perennial steam with stock water. Those are all achieved with box culverts, generally relatively wide, relatively shallow box culverts. Those we do not object to, and we're happy, I think the application actually contemplates that. A bridge, if you're thinking of a bridge where it has a clear span and it has a distance greater than, say, 14 or 15 feet, that is something that we would not, we don't think is necessary or justified in this location.
I'm considering both the scenic ability, because you've already, it's consistent with the concept that you have of this project, since you have open space and a viewing area to view that open space, so you, your owner, the developer, sees this as both a, an attractive amenity that will help sales, and two, something that you don't want to destroy, that you want to preserve, and it's consistent with giving a public benefit, so that folks can walk along and see this area.
Yes.
Now, I have not seen all the way up to Caldito Road on the other side, but my contemplation of a bridge is not Tappan Zee Bridge or San Francisco Bay Bridge, which I was involved in both.
Oh.
I'm not thinking of something like that.
There you go.
But I am thinking of something that is, is large enough that would allow not only the stream to remain in a, kind of the most undisturbed riparian circumstance that we can get, and allow wildlife, et cetera, to go back and forth underneath, not in a culvert, which would look a bit more industrial. In other words, inconsistent with what I think the design intent is, at least from what I can see from the slides.
So to allow, depends what type of wildlife you're asking about, but the, you know, if it were deer or something of that size or stature, four or five feet high, I don't think this culvert will get that big, this crossing. It won't be that high. If you're speaking of, you know, other animals that might be smaller, perhaps a coyote, a fox, something like that, certainly the box culvert would suffice, and has been routinely used in Douglas County and similar applications. I would tell you, actually, the, we, the culvert at, or Highway 395 and at the Martin Slough there, they reconstructed a few years ago, that's also a box culvert. There is an ability to do a segmental box culvert, which has an open bottom on it, which would remain a little more natural, which I think, Mr. Bruno, it seems to be your direction, but they're, they're not that high, is that. They are, you know, generally, they're sized for hydraulic reasons, you know, to a, you know, 50 or 100-year storm, and then they just don't get that high, because we don't have the topography to generally work with.
Understood. So I'm fairly clear that a bridge contemplating abutments, for example, is not something that you would agree to?
There's, it'd be, no, it would not be. And abutments, we may need, once the final technical drainage study's done and the final design's done, we may need abutments on that box culvert, but it would not be a bridge, as you and I might think.
It wouldn't be an abutment for structural, for example, to put concrete spans across and the road on top.
No.
You're following my idea of construction.
I am.
That would, in fact, allow deer or other animals of that sort.
That is not what we're contemplating.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
David.
Hi, Mr. Roberts. Rob, how are you doing?
I'm good, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things I wanted to address. Number one is, you've already heard about the airport and that that should be disclosed on this project. I think also the closeness to the sewer plant should be disclosed in whatever you're doing as far as sales go. I like the project. I think it makes sense.
Great. Thank you.
I know that you're meeting the requirements of 80 lots on one acre parcel, even though the lots are smaller than that, and due to the topography, that makes sense on this project.
Thank you.
So, other than that, I don't have any other thing to note on this.
Thank you.
I just like the disclosure on the sewer plant.
And, Mr. Nelson, I would tell you, on behalf of the applicant, we are agreeable to both the condition that requires navigation easement, as well as a disclosure of the relationships of both the airport and adjoining wastewater treatment plant within the CCNRs. Hopefully, as a Realtor, you would understand that, hopefully, that's as sufficient and it's about as far as we can go. Right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Get out your pen to help with public comment.
I will.
Please. And I will open this up for public comment. Those wishing to address the Commission, please come to the microphone, give your name for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? Good. My name is Dick Edwards, and I live at 2867 Hot Springs Road, about a half a mile, maybe a little more than that, from the proposed edge of the development with Vicki Lane over my back fence on the east side. I've been a residential construction consultant since 1999, and have been involved in hundreds of residential construction projects, working for developers as in independent experts. I review project plans to identify deficiencies for builders, lenders, and insurance providers. I have also been a construction defect expert, and in the past, chairman of the Board of the Building Standards Institute, and we publish a book that's used nationally to mitigate and alleviate discrepancies and disputes between owners, builders, homeowners, HOAs, dah dah. Anyway, I'm here to speak as a stakeholder against this proposed development. Let me give you some thumbnails here. Often developers buy projects from one another, and that involves a due diligence inspection of the project. I've been extensively involved in that for many builders, for many projects, for many years. One of the principal points about this is that infrastructure costs happen first. If you've got too many dollars in infrastructure cost, the project is not feasible, and I'm gonna give you just some thumbnail sketches, just from my read of the proposal and my experience in projects, most of them a lot larger than this, but at any rate, if infrastructure expenses exceed about 15 to 20% of the price of the project, the total valuation, the project isn't feasible and it's not going to be built. I'm gonna give you some rough thumbnails on this. This is an 80 parcel project, about an acre a piece, figure a million dollars each. Roughly, you're looking at $80 million in total valuation. That being the case, if you have 15 to 20 million dollars in infrastructure costs, this is a not, it's a no, it's dead on arrival, it's a no-starter. So, let me look at that, and I want to start with sewage disposal, because it's been indicated that the sewage from this project is going to be routed to the municipal sewage treatment facility not very far away. However, it's all uphill. This involves not only, well, let's be realistic.
Your time is run. Thank you. Your three minutes are up.
That was three minutes?
Three minutes. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Ramirez, and I don't know about anyone else in this room, but myself. Raise your hand if you're against the project, because I'm definitely against it. I live really close to the sewer area, and I don't, all these people who want to build over there, they don't realize the smell we get, and we're about three, three blocks away. When the wind blows, the smell is terrible. So you don't sit outside anymore, you just, you know, go inside. So adding all this other sewage is, sounds crazy. I hope that this project goes through, all those people are gonna know about the smell. All the wildlife that's gonna be displaced by this project. I go down in that hot springs and walk around, there's a lot of, a lot of wildlife, a lot of ducks. It's a nice place the way it is right now, but you make this, all this development, it's gonna make a whole lot more traffic and noise, and I, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, thank you guys very much, and thank you for allowing us time for comment. My name is Gina Caspar, and we have two houses in Saratoga Springs. My comments, and I did submit to your portal, thank you very much, two concerns, especially looking at this proposal. One is the two entrance points to the subdivision are both on Vicki. Should there be a wildfire incident or whatever, I don't see any western-type entrance to the subdivision, and that is concerning, in particular, because all the traffic that we see right now that's on the east side of Vicki, up above Saratoga Springs, runs through Saratoga Springs. So the cars drive directly through our subdivision, and I anticipate that that's exactly what's gonna happen again. Driving up Stephanie, it veers to the south, and then going down Vicki is a long drive for people who know there's a shortcut through Saratoga Springs. So there's several of us here that are on some of the side streets that are constantly used now, adding another 160 drivers, assuming there's just two drivers per household, plus maintenance, et cetera. I do see that that's, that is a very big concern, that and wildfire, so I hope you will please take that in consideration. I also, you know, was really praying that there might be a southern, or a western entrance, but I don't see that, and I don't know if that could be done, but those two entrances are awfully close to each other, and if there's a wildfire in our area, it's concerning to me, because that traffic's gonna come right through us, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please hold your applause down. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Clay Thomas, and I live at 1294 North Santa Barbara Drive. I'm here today to bring up some issues that I don't think have been discussed yet on this project. The first is density. Although the project says 80 acres and 80 homes, that's not a true reflection of actually what is occurring at that location. If you use Saratoga Springs as a template for the infrastructure, which is the roads in of themselves, that reduces that property by 9.6 acres. If you take into account the five open spaces, and I only used a half acre each for that, which would appear, I underestimated that by the size of the green on that, on that display up there, that's another two and a half acres. That brings it to 12 acres of lost property, which means that you would have to take those 12 acres, divide the number of people that have lost that, and put them on half-acre lots. That's 24 lots on that property at that time. That would indicate that is a 30%. That would indicate that is a 30% of that development is on half-acre lots. So, the one-acre lot density is really a misnomer. The second thing is about the traffic, and I'll give you a disclaimer real quick. I spent 10 years as a member of the Washoe County Board of Adjustment, and I was the chair of twice. We did traffic studies. We saw that come before us. The traffic study in itself says two stop signs that are at that location, basically for 80 homes, which is a very, again, a misnomer. 80 homes is usually about 1.5 houses per home, which would be 120 homes. They usually indicate that there are two peak hours, morning and the afternoon, which takes 120 and times it by two, so now there's 240 vehicle trips excluding any type of service vehicles in that area. For the next 10 years, you're going to have construction going on in that also. Vicki Lane is a two-lane, 35 mile an hour road with a school bus route on it. What the traffic study does not do is take into downstream activity. It says 80 homes in this, no problem coming out onto Vicki Lane, but as you go down further, what happens is you hit Stephanie Lane, and you hit the other developments, which definitely puts a burden on the rest of the infrastructure further down and then out onto 395. The last thing I'll talk about on here is the hot springs, which I think is a bit interesting, that they do show a good open area there, but that is going to consist of a neighborhood with children and with pets in it. And since it is a hot springs, it does create a potential hazard for individuals living in that development. So, the question becomes is what do you do? Do you section that off? Do you put fences up there? And in so doing, someone's going to cut the fences and go back in there anyway. So, I don't think it's really advantageous, and I would recommend that this project be denied based on two items before you. One would be the site suitability, and the second one would be issuance, not detrimental.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please, no clapping. Sir.
Hi, my name is Guy Proto. I live at 1251 North Santa Barbara Drive, and I won't rehash all this stuff about traffic and the fire hazards and that kind of thing with the Egress out of the area. I'd like to talk about generally the growth in the county with all these developments going on at the same time. I always thought that this county was always supposed to be a rural county. It was supposed to have open spaces and slow growth. That's obviously not happening anymore. Something must have changed that I missed, so I wanted to talk about that. I also want to talk about that with the influx of people moving into this county, which this adds to is we do not have enough infrastructure to support these people that are coming in here. I mean, not just roads. We don't have enough doctors. We don't have enough plumbers. We don't have electricians, and the demographics of the people moving into this county are people who require those services, not people who provide them. So, that's my objection, and I do object to developments, large developments in general. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will ask again, please no clapping. It slows things down, and it's disruptive to a degree. So, we can clap when everybody's done. Okay? Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank everyone who submitted written comments. We did receive them.
Good afternoon. My name's Jason Farnum. I live on South Santa Barbara Drive. I've lived out there since 2009 and have actually worked with the road maintenance supervisor on a few times, just as far as the condition of South Santa Barbara, which will be a connecting road used for the subdivision. South Santa Barbara, the last time it was resurfaced sometime after 2009, maybe about 2010, to my knowledge, was resurfaced using kind of an improper mix of aggregate and petroleum that our particular environment has leached out of the road, causing significant shrinkage across the road. So, probably every 20 to 50 yards, there's been massive separations in that road that have led to huge cracks that my road, or my house being right on that particular road, we definitely get the hammering from even just passenger cars, so let alone the big trucks. So, the road maintenance supervisor has been fantastic. They send out road maintenance crews to solve those cracks in that road, which unfortunately only lasts about a month, maybe three months at the very most, and then we're right back to the same hammering. My concern is, is that when we start getting hundreds more vehicles on that roadway that already can't seem to really support nicely the flux of traffic that we already have, I'm just concerned the amount of noise that we're going to have on those homes that live on that road as well. The large trucks are going to be used in conjunction to build this property and to build those homes. That's just going to add to that problem even more and degrading that road even further. They have done some recent repairs on South Santa Barbara, very close to the Stephanie Way intersection. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at those. Those are just recently completed to cover over some patchwork, some previous patchwork that had failed, kind of resulting in some shallow potholes. That repair that has just been done on that road, still very lumpy, very bumpy, very noisy, not well done. It's just, it's so, in my estimation, the infrastructure that we currently have already doesn't support the amount of traffic that we have on that road. Adding this is just going to cause even more of a nightmare. In talks with Douglas County Sheriff's Office, it's also, to my knowledge, they have discontinued their traffic unit due to funding, and so obviously as a result of that, in the past 12 years since I've been out there, we've seen a large increase in speeding and reckless driving. I get a firsthand view of it all day long. And again, so when you add more folks to that road, that kind of stuff is going to go up if Douglas County is not properly funded to have the traffic units out there in that area maintaining reckless driving and speed control. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Nathan Tilber for the record. I basically would like to voice my support for the project with one major caveat, but first, the reasons I support it. One, this development is adjacent to existing housing and will connect county services rather than being hooked up to onsite wells and septic systems, which is a good thing. The general location is in conformance with the idea of maintaining the view corridor of the valley, so whether we like it or not, but the Northwest Valley area where I live is really where the growth should be and where we have the, we're not going to affect the rural image of our downtown Central Valley. And then the other thing is opening up the access to the hot springs. When I was in high school, we used to go down there with a shovel, I was someone, and dig a little hole and sit in the hot springs. And since Bentley's taken that over, that's been cut off completely. And I thanks for admitting you trespass, because we all do that. But this is going to increase access. A lot of people are going to know that the hot springs is actually out there, so I kind of like the idea of that getting back to being used. The caveat, though, is that Douglas County has a long history of accepting these developments without any vision for the long-term maintenance of the infrastructure and especially the streets, as we've been talking about. We accept these bright new shiny developments without the consideration of what they're going to look like in 20 years. Well, Saratoga Springs is just over 20 years, and we see what it looks like. And the Streets Department just simply is understaffed and underfunded to be able to maintain the streets and keep them up. And that is what I would challenge you guys to, is to bring this to the Board of County Commissioners, because it's not just our area, it's everywhere, and recommend that they put together a committee or a task force or something to address a long-term solution to funding our streets' maintenance so that we can get our streets back up to task, because we, in the 80s, you know, took on a lot of subdivisions, and now they're running down, and there's no solution. And I don't know what that solution is, but somebody has got to start a solution, and I know it's not a today or a tomorrow fix, but in the next 10 years, it would be nice to have, to know that we're going to close the gap on those roads. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jim Bentley. I live up on Sheridan Lane, and I'd like to address something that hasn't been, I haven't heard today, and that is water. Where's all this water coming from? I'm constantly told that we don't have enough water. The Water District wants to put meters on everybody's houses, and you're just, and the cost of water is extremely expensive. Why are we getting more of this? Is this going to bring the cost of water down, or is it going to make it higher? That's, these are the questions that have to be answered. You can't have it both ways. It's either we have plenty of water and we shouldn't worry about it, or we don't have enough water. Which is it? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Karen Klein, and I live on North Santa Barbara, and I would just like to speak to the long-term effects of this development and for the poor HOA Association that's going to be seeded by the developer with all these mitigation requirements, maintenance requirements, infrastructure. We just heard from the gentleman that they're going to encourage public visitation of the springs area, yet the homeowners association will be responsible for all of that. 80 homes. I live in Saratoga Springs. We have over 500 homes, and we struggle financially to deal with the fire mitigation, with the infrastructure problems, with our landscaping issues. We struggle with that. I can't imagine 80, and the supposition in the report on page 13 that each of these phases will stand alone is nonsensical to me. The first phase is what, 18 homes? Has the two biggest portions of common area in their open space? You're going to expect those people to maintain that during the course of development? I don't see how that's even possible. I urge oppositions to this. Reject it.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jay Herbert. I live at 1371 Sandy Lane. Appreciate the time to speak to the planning committee. I have a couple of things I want to mention. First of all, the fact that this is, says it's consistent with the master plan, but that's just a lie presented as a truth. There's 80 acres. 25% of those acres are required to be open space. You take 25% of 80 acres, that's 60. That means the maximum parcels they could sell would be 61-acre parcels. So, the density of this property should be 60, not 80. So, again, that's a lie presented as a truth. The second thing is the storm drainage. You'll notice they do a very good job of getting that storm drainage out of that neighborhood. Where does it all go? It goes all into the wetlands. So, now you're going to have oil from the cars, tire runoff, all those different things that our streets dump off will be going into the wetlands to the north of that property. That has not been clearly covered, and that is a very bad situation to maintain the integrity of our wetlands in our county. And the last thing I wanted to also make sure that everybody understood is that there were many things that the first gentleman should have had a chance to talk about but did not. I believe he has presented all of that to you. I hope you've all had a chance to read that. He brought up many, many good items that need to be addressed. My final concern is traffic. I have a, on Standen Lane, when I come through on traffic time, I can't turn left off of 395 now. I don't care about the D's or the E's or the F's, whatever. I can't turn left on there now. It's already running out onto the second lane of 395 when you turn left on Stephanie. The second thing is that four-way stop at Stephanie and Vicki. It is absolutely backed up all the way to the entrance to the other subdivision at traffic time right now. And as they said, the only entrance to these subdivisions will be on Vicki Lane. So, all of those people are going to come to that four-way stop, or most of them, and then we're just going to have even more traffic problems right there. I don't think that it's bad use of the land. I should say that. It was planned for this in the county plan a long time, but I do think that 60 is the number, 80 is not the number, and I think you have to somehow address those traffic concerns as well as the stormwater runoff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. No one else? Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment and bring you back to the commission. Rob, are you ready? Okay, let's start with the traffic study.
With the traffic study, so the way the traffic study, excuse me, let me just say, Rob Anderson again for the record. The way the traffic studies are performed and required to be performed by Douglas County Code is that it is evaluated based on key intersections. The transportation engineer for the county has consulted. Those intersections are identified. The traffic consultant then reviews those. I, just having driven through that intersection at Stephanie and 395, I understand the concerns that have been expressed about the number of vehicles that can stage in that left turn lane. Those improvements are on US Highway 395, but that intersection was evaluated. It was cited within the staff report as needing improvements and projected improvements by 2042. I don't think that's a significant surprise to anybody, including Nevada Department of Transportation, but it is nonetheless not, it is, those conditions exist today. What is the responsibility of the applicant is to deal with the increment. So, there's apparently 500 homes in Saratoga Springs that contribute to that intersection and some of that traffic. There are potentially 80 here. Our client has agreed to participate in a pro-rata share of those improvements. I think that is equitable and fair. With respect to Vicki Lane and the traffic and the cross-through traffic in the neighborhood, I honestly, I'm very sympathetic to that. I believe those members of the public who have spoken to that issue are right. That likely, or excuse me, not likely, it's probable that people will use that as a cut through. There are various measures and means of dealing with that, but as those are public streets, they have to be, the residents have the ability to petition the transportation engineer and seek, you know, ability as they have in elsewhere in Mindon or Gardenville I'm familiar with, where they have constructed speed bumps or traffic tables, those types of calming devices that slow down people and would increase the travel time and potentially cause them to use these other routes. Again, that is not something that our client can affect, if you will, in these improvements. That's what I have on the traffic.
Okay, there is a concern about, and I know the traffic study addressed it, but you can vocalize it better, the issues with the four-way stop at Vicki and Stephanie.
Again, that, I believe that intersection was specifically evaluated and found to meet Douglas County's criteria. The, and again, the criteria, just so everybody understands, is a level of service of C. There is that, if it does not work today, right, if it's, if you find it unacceptable today, the fix is largely responsibility, you know, just very honestly, the responsibility of all of us that live in Douglas County to make that improvement. This developer can, you know, he had, or excuse me, they will have an incremental impact on that intersection, but not, they're not responsible to fix all the past ills or the things that have developed over time. So, that is, that was reviewed. It was found to meet the standards. You know, based on Douglas County's adopted standards, it would not require further mitigation at this time. But again, I do not doubt for a moment that some of these people have experienced that getting back to their homes or driving out of the development in the morning.
The concern about the density on this project with the amount of open space that's being considered with the dam breach and the hot springs, that we're going from the single-family one to the half-acre projects, and that we're miscalculating because we're going to half-acre projects. How do you address that?
So, Douglas County Code provides that we can utilize, or a landowner can utilize the provisions of the planned development. The specific purpose of the planned development section of Douglas County Code is to allow the, and accommodate constraints that exist on the property, physical constraints or administrative constraints that affect the property, and to cluster the density that's allowed within areas that are outside of those for environmental, for scenic, whatever purpose it might be, that is allowed by the code. The code specifically provides that we calculate the acre, or the density based on the gross acre, not the net acre, for the overall land use. It is, in fact, irrespective of the objection, it is in fact Zone SFR 1. That allows one house per acre, is that zoning district. We calculate under the gross acres. This landowner has the right to develop 80 units. Because of the constraints that I described in my presentation, and by use of the planned development application, we used half-acre density, which matches what has been done in Saratoga Springs. Actually, many, it's much larger, or excuse me, it's larger than many of the lots within Saratoga Springs, so it is a So it is a common planning exercise. But the density in Douglas County is calculated on the gross acre based on the zoning density that's allowed.
The first speaker spoke to the due diligence and the infrastructure costs and that his estimate was an eighty million in total valuation and that it was too expensive to develop this project. Do you have any comments on that?
I do, Madam Chairman. I did read Mr. Edwards' comments that he provided in writing. Just for the purpose of the record, I too have testified in several numerous actually construction defect cases as an expert. His opinions notwithstanding, irrespective of what some national standard might be relative to the feasibility of a project based on an infrastructure calculation is really immaterial. The parties that will develop this will make a determination based on the land cost, the actual cost of development, including any mitigation that are required. They will make an assessment of that and determine whether or not they can make an economically feasible for their purposes based on what the prospective sales price of it. Frankly, I think every developer in Douglas County has done that or made that decision. Some of it rather poorly for projects that have failed. Some of them have been imminently successful. But it is frankly, an individual, and it's a site-specific analysis that occurs based on my experience in representing landowners over all these years. So with respect to his opposition to the economics of it, I do not believe that is accurate for this valley. If it was accurate, I would tell you that the person who commented on the growth would not have an issue, right? There would not be a lot of these developments because the margins on them are not four to one, at least my development clients tell me that. So with respect to that, he did raise some other questions though in his comments that I would just like to point out to you and make sure that the board understands, the commission understands, that they were addressed in our application materials. Number one, there is a geotechnical investigation that was done. And the recommendations within the geotechnical investigation included how we deal with the potential for some of the hot springs issues, some of the, it did evaluate the soil corrosivity and made recommendations with respect to that as well as soil bearing values, recommendations for asphalt thicknesses of the streets. Each of those items were specifically addressed in the geotechnical analysis. In addition, there was an investigation of the wetlands that was done by a professional consultant to determine those. Since that has occurred, there's been, the United States Supreme Court, many of you are probably aware, has changed that definition by a direct ruling. And so we're not certain exactly what that means to these particular areas that were previously identified under the former regulations. But nonetheless, the analysis was done and we have protected those areas. We have also engaged in a resource, archaeological resource consultant to verify some of the potential artifacts were there. That information was submitted to the state historic preservation officer and we were given permission to proceed with the project as designed. So many of those issues that were raised and by innuendo or otherwise in Mr. Edwards' report actually have been addressed and are in the file for, you know, viewing by, you know, frankly, anybody in the public. So I do think we've, I believe my client has gone over and above what is normally done for many of these developments to address those perspective concerns.
My last question to you before I turn it back to the commission is the comments regarding the hot springs. That one of the speakers spoke to your encouragement of people to go into the hot springs. I did not get that from your comments, that you were inviting the public to go into the hot springs. My take on what you were saying was that you were making improvements with the overlook for the enjoyment of the residents in the subdivision, not for the general public to come in and trespass into the hot springs, is that what you were saying?
So these roads are set up as public roads and they meet Douglas County's public standards. So in theory, Mr. Walder could drive down that road, stop, look in it. Using Mr. Bruno's example of having walked through there apparently in the past, they could even walk through there and enjoy the scenic value of that area. That is what it's set up to be. It is anticipated to be largely left in its natural state, so the maintenance costs of it are not expected to be grossly absurd. It's not as if it's going to be specifically landscaped and irrigated and consume a lot of water as my friend Mr. Bentley pointed, or was concerned about. But rather that it'd be available that, for people to visualize it, even walk along it. As far as climbing in the hot springs, I do not believe my client is very interested in seeing that happen. I do not know what restriction yet would be applied to that, but I don't think that anybody on my side of the table would be interested in promoting that for the public or making it public. There is actually the hot springs on the other side of the road for that purpose.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two very brief and minor questions that I think I'd ask of Jeremy and then some comments along the lines of what the chair was exploring and the public comments that were made earlier. Jeremy, we got the...
Okay, let's let Mr. Anderson sit down.
He may at this point.
Thank you.
We received the October twenty-third memorandum from Shaker Garland of R.O. Anderson about the wastewater treatment plan next door. And I just wanted to ask you if you concur with that analysis based on your professional experience.
Yeah, Jeremy Archings, county engineer for the record. So, yeah, and there's also Mr. Walder. It looks consistent with the previous report that the public works department had commissioned for the other three sides of the breach. There is a special condition in there. It's a little bit deep dive on engineering, but the public work specifically made that is in your packet to append that report at the end, but generally yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ridker, did you have any other comments that you wanted to add on this one? Okay, thank you. And then Jeremy, I'm not sure if you're the expert on this. I think most of these conditions of approval were in the engineering department, but we received this morning a modified conditions of approval. I think there were probably over twenty-five or thirty, but they were pretty small and technical, I believe. And I just wanted to call the public's attention to that. I think the sheets are probably out on the front desk. If not, they're very minor changes. Am I correct, Jeremy, on those conditions of approval?
Correct. They are fairly minor. I mean, and then I've kind of jotted down notes for the ones that, it depends on perspective, right? The horizontal radius for a street in Douglas County is the minimum of one hundred and fifty feet. There are two elbow kind of harder nineties that need to be massaged on that. Doesn't really... Yeah, thanks, Kate. The level of service, so just a couple of corrections. I was listening to Mr. Anderson's presentation and perhaps he just, I think he just misspoke the level of service in the traffic study. There's two levels of services that we have to be aware of for intersections. Douglas County requires a level of service to be maintained of C once the project builds out, in case it'd be out to two thousand forty-two. DOT has a different level of service. It's a level of service of D. The intersection at three ninety-five and Stephanie for the, and it stems from the left, southbound left turn movement falls to an F in certain scenarios. So the condition was modified to maintain that at a D because that's DOT standard and not a C as I originally put in there. The next condition I think I had requested be modified was to eliminate the hillside grading. The reason for that is hillside grading is defined as fifteen percent or greater with the caveat that that area is identified in the master plan. This area, really in my opinion, in my professional opinion, that intent is, hillside grading is like in the Sierras and the Pine nuts scenarios that are significantly steep for the entire site. And the other reason we eliminated that is because we're down on the perennial stream that's already incurred by the open space easement anyway, so there's not going to be any development except the crossing of the road. I think the third comment off the top of my head is the modification to the D restriction for odor. Unfortunately, I was playing lawyer and tried to write at my best ability to alert the people that might bite the lot that you are next to a sewage treatment plant. And there's, there've been some back and forth with lawyer AJ and some staff members that requested a modification to that. It still reads that, hey, watch out, you're next to a sewer plant. But AJ stepped in and helped us out and pre- that went up for us. I think generally that's it for engineering, I think, on the modifications, Mr. Walder.
Yes, that is it. And I do want to commend you for your hard work on this. There's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross, so thank you for your good work. I do want to address the whole issue of the public comments that we received, both in the packet before the meeting, which as Bryce mentioned and Maureen mentioned, we always read those very carefully before the meetings and get a feel for what people are saying in the public comment that was addressed here. If I could just talk about a couple of things, and I know Rob mentioned some of these, but the cost of infrastructure, obviously, that's a, that's a major concern, but it's not the planning commission's role to say, well, your infrastructure's going to be too costly, so we're going to deny you the project. That's on the developer. If the developer miscalculates and has to put in more on the cost of infrastructure, tough luck in my opinion. We don't, we don't dictate what their profit margin is or what their potential losses are. The two entrances, I would just note for the record on the packet, page seventy-five, I think most of the other housing areas along the east side of Vicki only have one entrance or maybe two entrances if it circles around. So I think that's acceptable. I do feel for people who are going to have to drive in through some of those intersections as the development moves forward. But I think it's been properly addressed as far as conditioning it so that funds will be set aside for improvements down the road. The half-acre lots, I think Rob explained that. Planned developments are different from straight developments, so I think that's acceptable in my view. And I think there are other planned developments in the area, so this would be conforming with those. Comment was made about the influx coming into Douglas County. I continually hear this, but I continually check the data and we're really growing at about one-half of one percent a year. That's the population growth. And that's, in some respects, concerning to me because as you look at the demographic numbers, the one-half of one percent of the growth comes at the higher end of the age components. So we're aging very rapidly and that's, that's a concern for the long-term health of Douglas County. We need young people, we need workers, we need the kinds of people that are going to stimulate the economy as the, as the time moves forward. And then lastly, the comment was made about the homeowners association not being able to maintain the costs of the development. And again, I think that's a very, very valid concern. There are people who come down on the side of homeowners associations, think they're a good thing, but I think it's always buyer beware if you're buying a property and you know the homeowner association is going to have to expend funds for certain things. And you have to do your due diligence and understand that if the homeowners association needs to make assessments that are large dollar amounts, then you bought the property, you're stuck with it. So I think that, again, that's nothing that the planning commission can address in conditions or other parts of the agreement that we vote upon. So I did want to address those, but the public comments are very important to us and we do read those and listen to those. So thank you for coming today.
Mark.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the first question I have for Jeremy is, once the improvements are done, this project will have to go through the HDR analysis to make sure that the water is not affecting adjacent parcels?
So Jeremy Archings, again for the record, I think typically when people say an HDR analysis, Mr. Nandjip, they're talking about a flood study. This isn't in a floodplain. Civil engineer regularly doing work in this area such as Robbie Anderson can stamp and take responsible charge for a typical drainage report. So he'll have to prepare a final drainage report in accordance with sign criteria division six, but it's not necessarily an HDR report. There is a dam break analysis that will need to be, also a few conditions addressed by more of a specialty consultant, I think. Rob, do you remember who you're using on that? It's Rob Anderson himself. So I apologize. It's, Rob feels that he's, yeah, so Rob will be doing that. But it's not an HDR report. So when you say the term HDR report, commonly referred to as a flood impact analysis for our physical map revision in the main valley where the Carson River floods, it's not applicable here.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Excuse me, it's time for the commission to address questions, please. Bryce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo Commissioner Walder's sentiments about the public. As a Douglas County resident, obviously, I appreciate the fact that you're here, that you care about your community, that your voice and your concerns, many of which of them are very valid. The challenge is, and I say this often when we're talking about new development, is the juxtaposition of managing responsible growth and conservation. And as a planning commission, we are responsible for upholding the master plan and zoning. And this particular development is not in conflict, despite what the gentleman said, with the master plan, nor is it in conflict with zoning. And so the challenge is, is that our responsibility is to, is to, is to make a recommendation based on, on those criteria which this development, which this development meets. And so, you know, as far as traffic studies and dam breaks and water, all of those things have to be done in order to satisfy the planning department, engineering, public works, community development, et cetera, et cetera. So I have all the confidence in the world that this development will not move forward and homes will not be built unless it can find, unless it can comply with the requirements of each of those divisions within Douglas County. So we can't, we can't deny a project, especially one that is, as my colleague Commissioner Nelson stated, is master planned to be an extension of an already single-family residential community. This isn't going on the west side of three ninety-five where it doesn't belong. It belongs in a residential community and it's zoned and it's master planned for that. So, you know, based on that, it's an appropriate development. I do agree with Mr. Anderson that I think that this particular applicant has done a good job of trying to maintain open space, preserving the wetlands, preserving the hot springs, recognizing that there is a concern with the treatment facility next door and a potential for a dam break. I mean, there's a lot of things that have gone in and a lot of costs. And with respect to development, if it doesn't financially pencil, this developer won't build it. I mean, that's just the bottom line. And so I, that's not our purview as Commissioner Walder noted. And so we, we're responsible for addressing the things that are within our purview. You know, with respect to water, I hear you, sir. I understand where you're coming from. That's not something that we can deal with as a planning commission. We do not control, that's, that's the state water engineer, that's the local municipalities. It's not under the purview of the planning commissioner to decide whether a project moves forward based upon our particular opinion about water. If there's concerns about water, I would suggest that you bring those before the Board of County Commissioners and they will address that in terms of the state water engineer. But with respect to this project, this project is the right project for the zoning and the master planning in Douglas County. And so for that reason, it will get my support.
David.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about Title twenty. That's the rules that we have to go by. That's, that's the zoning and everything and the building requirements that have to be met. I don't necessarily agree with all of Title twenty, but I have no right to tell a builder if he's building to Title twenty that he can't do it because I don't like it. So I have to go along with what Title twenty says. We're in the process of rewriting it. I hope we can get it done before too long and I hope we can address a lot of things that you brought up here today because that's where it needs to be addressed, is in those regulations. Thank you.
Can I say a couple of things first, Paul? I would like to thank Phil Ridger for his prompt response on the dam breach report. You included this... his prompt response on the dam breach report. You included this this morning. It's a wonderful report, and it was missing from the applicant's report. And I think it was very important to the Planning Commission to have this information, because we had no idea of the warm springs and the hot springs that were to the north of the project. You can see them, but not in the detail that the report that Phil gave to us. Kate?
Madam Chair, if I may, Kate Morales O'Neill, again, on Douglas County Planning. Actually, the applicant, this report was part of their application. I'm going to turn the blame on me. I just, I know, I just did not, inadvertently, I did not include this report. This is a learning moment to include all of the documentation, even though these, like Rob said, this applicant, this owner went, you know, over and beyond. So, there was the environmental and the dam breach report I should have included in the item in PEEK, and I failed to do so. So, that is on me, not the applicant.
Well, whatever. Phil gave it to us, and I really appreciate it. And I appreciate Phil's being here. Please.
Phil, excuse me, Phil Rittger, excuse me. Phil Rittger, Director of Public Works, for the record. I provided the report to you, and it was actually provided to me by Jeremy and the community development. So, they sent it to me, I reviewed it, and sent it to you. Along those lines, and really, because the applicant and the engineering firm reached out to us back in October, I think of last year, regarding this study, because we had, in 2021, as part of a state regulation, conducted what's called an emergency, an action plan, which is really a planning tool for, in the event of a dam breach. Now, the dam, there is, so that clarify for everyone, the reservoir, the treated water reservoir that is at the pond we're talking about, is defined as a dam by the state Department of Water Resources. So, we have to do a breach analysis on that. It's sort of the, you know, you look at worst-case analysis as to what would happen if that dam was to breach. In this case, the dam can breach in one of, any one of four directions. With, in 2021, when we did the study, the areas of inundation that were of interest, where housing and development and other infrastructure was, would have been directly to the north, which would be into those wetlands, which then flow down into the Carson River, would have been to the west, which flows out across the treatment plant itself, and then to the south, which would flow in, which would inundate or create problems for the existing housing development in Sarasota Springs. And the goal of those breach analysis is really to look at, not just where will the flood, where will that water travel to, but it's also the goal of those studies is to look at the time, the time study essentially. It's how fast will water travel, how quickly will it get to a location, because the real goal of those studies, and even this inundation report study, is to understand what's your response time to an emergency. If the dam starts to breach or the dam starts to fail, how quickly can you respond with emergency services to evacuate people, move people out of harm's way? It's not, it's no different than really wildfire prevention or systems as well. It's not about stopping a wildfire. It's about what's the reaction time and how can you deal with that. So, just want to put that in context, too, that this is, you know, again, very low probability of any dam breach out there. The pond and reservoir is inspected per state regulations on an annual basis. We have continuous improvement programs going to repair any damage that's seen or erosion that happens. So, you know, this is not a neglected structure. It's not one, but, you know, but you could have a catastrophic event. And that's what that study's really for.
Is this primary or secondary waste?
This treated, it's treated effluent. So, that water is actually then, under a state, under state permit, that water is discharged to, under an agreement, to agricultural application use on about 200 acres to the west.
So, it's secondary?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, legally, we can call it treated wastewater?
Yes. Yeah, it's treated, treated effluent, treated wastewater, correct.
Okay. So, Jeremy, you can amend your deed restriction. Okay? And also, I wanted to address the issue that came up about the, the comment that talked about the smell and the people moving into the new neighborhood. And the language that we copied for this neighborhood for the deed restriction, for the CCNRs, came straight out of the CCNRs for Sarasota Springs. And also, the one we're going to use for aviation will come out of the Sarasota Springs, for the most part, that language. So, nobody can say we weren't warned and you didn't tell us. If they read their CCNRs, they will have the language there. Correct? A.J.? Right?
Tom Delaire, for the record, Community Development Director. Yes, Chairman Casey, that is, that is correct. I would also think we can add another condition, just stating that we should put notes on the final map, so that if somebody reviews the actual map itself, they would, they would be alerted to these particular things. We can handle that at the final map stage, but at least that way, it is noted on the map as well as a deed restriction for each of the parcels that are being created, and also in the CCNR. So, there really isn't any way to miss it.
And there was one more thing on one of the lower streets. Jeremy, that one curve on the lower street that you amended in your report?
Correct, Chairman Casey. That was, what I mentioned with Mr. Walder, that was one of the revisions that are included in the amended report, to have a 150-foot minimum radius on the local roads, horizontal.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Paul?
It was mentioned in our written comments from the public, as well as a side comment from a speaker today about the sewer fall and collection, such that it could get to the sewer treatment plant. The suggestion was made, and I confess I did not compare elevations, because I didn't have enough available to me in the packet, to determine whether it was a substantial fall, such that a pumping station would be necessary to get it up and over into the sewer treatment plant. But that is, that's, I'm interested to know, and I guess, Mr. Anderson, you might be able to comment on this, because that is also an additional cost of infrastructure, obviously, that would be necessary before all phases were complete.
For the record, Rob Anderson, again. Yes, the topography of this site and the elevation of the existing gravity sewer line that is on Stephanie, or, excuse me, Vicki Lane, are, they vary significantly. And so, there are pump stations proposed. This has been designed with what we would call, or what I would call, a low-pressure sanitary sewer system, where each home has a small lift pump, sewer pump, that lifts it up into a common force main that pumps the sewage up to the gravity main. Very common, as we get into these situations in the county, where we have this topographical relief, these systems are necessary. And it avoids a public lift station where the Public Utilities Division, which as some people have pointed out today, is somewhat understaffed, that they would have to maintain yet another significant facility. So, the way we have treated it is with a low-pressure sewer system.
Is that low-pressure sewage system that connects to the collector going to be part of the homeowners' association requirements to maintain?
The sewer force main, yes. The sewer pumps themselves will be maintained by the private owners.
By the private owners, and they are dependent upon electrical supply, I assume?
Yes, sir.
And they have backflow to the extent that the electric stops or is unavailable for a day or two?
Correct.
And such that the sewer doesn't go backwards and up into the residence?
That's correct. And each, as a result of this requirement under the Uniform Plumbing Code, each of these houses will be, that are, have a lift station, will be equipped also with a backflow preventer on the water surface, which is unique when you have a low-pressure system.
Thank you. The other question I had, which is, I think, appropriate for you, is that when the formation of the homeowners' association takes place?
Yes.
Is there, or do you know, if there's a restriction such that the developer will continue to fund until 50% or more of the units are sold?
Relative to, they have to fund, so the way the associations work is there's a capital cost and a contribution cost that is determined for that. They have to fund the reserves.
Right.
And then they can give over, once they have funded the reserves, they can give it over to the association, and the association is responsible for collecting dues. I don't know that it is at a 50%. I would tell you, however, that most development clients that I know, they want to maintain control of it for a period of time, such that the fees don't get to be disproportionate inadvertently or otherwise, and as a result, make it undesirable location. So, in my experience, most developers will control it for up to 50%, turn it over to association after they've funded the reserves.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a question. On the wastewater, say the power goes out?
Yes, sir.
Is there temporary power to help those pumps emit their, dispose the sewage?
Not that would be provided by the public. Obviously, each homeowner could equip their home with a standby power. But the way that Nevada Division Environmental Protection requires us to size those is there's approximately a day's worth of sewage flow, or maybe a little less than a day. But it is also, each of them are equipped with an alarm, so that both an audible and a visible alarm, so the homeowner is aware if that condition occurs. You're welcome.
Other questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? No? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman?
Kirk?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I would move that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners' plan development for PD tentative subdivision map, TSM, Application DP 22-02-07, to establish a PD overlay and to subdivide 80 acres into 80 single-family residential lots, the smallest being 21,780 square feet, with five common open space parcels, based on staff, concluding that the applicant has met the required findings as outlined in the staff report presentation and public comment.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Kirk and a second by Mark. Discussion. Paul?
Would the moving party, which is Kirk, be amenable, and the second, sorry, to a condition that would be added to Planning Division A, that's capital A, nine, period B, which would call for, instead of a culvert, a bridge over or under Kalito Way, such that the hot springs would allow, the bridge would allow wildlife to go to the hot springs and away from the hot springs, keeping a natural, visible improvement on the downstream portion of that riparian area. Since it is a perennial stream, the Supreme Court case likely will not affect that, which will deal primarily with those bodies of water that don't connect with another body of water, or they're ephemeral, or they are intermittent. And this one is perennial. It goes all the time. But in any event, that, that bridge be with a natural surface on the bottom. I leave the design of that bridge with our recommendation to our engineering department, but it is not to be a culvert or industrial-looking structure. And that is also to be in part of the improvement with the separated iron fence, wrought iron fence, that was shown as one of the two alternatives to us in our packet, that all of the areas that face the riparian area, including the roadway, as well as behind the homes, be made of that iron, which would allow a view for the public, as well as the residents, to preserve what I regard as a very valuable asset in that area of our valley.
Madam Chair, if I understand you correctly, Paul, you're suggesting two things. One, we say that they have to have a bridge, and secondly, that they have to have iron fence?
Iron fence, as distinguished from the
Right.
solid wood, which was the other alternative that they're going to be using on that subdivision, such that the public, even from the roads, can enjoy that view of the hot springs and the riparian area.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to both of them. I think my concern is on the first one, dictating that they have a bridge. I'm not an engineer, so I may have to lean on Jeremy or Rob Anderson for this. But I think those are terms that may cause difficulties if they are defined in the conditions of approval.
Let me clarify. I can clarify.
Well, I think you outlined your concerns fairly well when you originally questioned Mr. Anderson on this, and I think he gave a fairly appropriate response. But I defer to my colleagues if they wanted to weigh in one way or the other. But I'd be sympathetic to the second portion. I don't, I'm not sure that that would cause any problems for the developer. But the first one, I think, needs some, maybe further understanding or acceptance by other members of the, of the Planning Commission.
Discussion?
Yes, if I may say, we are allowing a PUD. And accordingly, there should be something that developer gives back to the community for having the more relaxed aspects of allowing density, et cetera, all the things that are being requested in this. And I think it's de minimis to say, would rather have a bridge that gave a, improved the viewscape, as distinguished from industrial culvert that was initially anticipated. There are box culverts, and you could have the bottom, as Mr. Anderson indicated. And it could be high enough, when I think about stacking two box culverts, but I want to leave that to the engineering department, because I don't know the span, and so I can't tell you how much weight would be placed on each side, whether an arched span, arched culvert, or there are, there are, there's lots of engineering solutions out there that would be less industrial. I think your term is, Mr. Bruno? I think that your thinking is exactly in concert with mine.
Whether Mr. Anderson's thinking is exactly in concert with ours might remain to be seen. But the plans do call out for a 60-inch box culvert, so 65 foot by 5 foot. It's a pretty good size.
I think that when we say bridge, we're thinking cast concrete and pretty with
Perhaps bottomless.
Yes. And, and I don't think that's necessary. It's just something that's open with rocks on the bottom, that deer can go through, coyotes can go through, bears can go through if they're there. I think that's what Paul has in mind. Something that the water can go through, that won't be clogged with tumbleweeds and I think that when we say "bridge," we're thinking cast concrete and pretty with
Perhaps bottomless.
Yes. And, and I don't think that's necessary. It's just something that's open with rocks on the bottom, that deer can go through, coyotes can go through, bears can go through if they're there. I think that's what Paul has in mind. Something that the water can go through, that won't be clogged with tumbleweeds and other debris, so the homeowners don't have to worry about clearing it.
So, I'm hearing bottomless?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Culvert instead of bridge.
Bottomless and, and something that will allow not only view, but the wildlife ingress and egress back and forth.
So, I think it goes back to Mr. Walder, I think?
Well, again, it's, it's definitional. If, if we just say "wildlife," I think Rob Anderson made a very good point. There's, there's large deer, and there's small raccoons, and I'm not prepared to accept an amendment that would be so open-ended, that I agree 100% with your intent, Paul, on the, on the first issue that you raised, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree to a friendly amendment that would leave it so open-ended, or, or so, so greatly constrict the, the developer at this point.
Well, not a question of developer constricting the developer, it's that we, as a public entity, are recommending something that there is no entitlement to, and I think there should be something given back to the community. That's really my thinking.
Well, when you
Hold on, let me finish. This is not an expensive change, as Jeremy and I were just discussing, to allow something that would be an amenity that could be enjoyed by the public and by those that ultimately buy, and it not, need not be necessary, as our chairwoman said, some type of a structure, but maybe an arch, maybe, maybe a box, but it's large enough and high enough, and a natural bottom, that it doesn't disrupt. It doesn't say, here's the riparian area, and all of a sudden, here's an industrial area that we cheaply threw up because we wanted to save money without regard to the community.
Bryce.
Madam Chair, I, I too am respectful of Commissioner Bruno's comments. However, I'm not aware, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, of anything within Douglas County Code that says in order for us to do a plan development, that, that the developer is required to give X, some arbitrary amount back to the community. I, I think it's subjective, I think it's arbitrary, and I, I think it's well-intended. However, there is no requirement under the code for us to put that condition upon the developer, because he, he's, the developer isn't getting anything. This, the developer is following exactly what the code allows.
May I respond, ma'am?
Rob.
For the record, Rob Anderson, again, in discussing with my client, if, that we would be agreeable to constructing at that location, a segmental box culvert, which has a specific definition, and does not have a bottom in it, typically footing's there, with a maximum height of 5 feet. We'll figure out the span as a result of the hydrology and hydraulics, but a maximum height of 5 feet. Much higher than that, and I don't think we have the topography without building a hump in the road. Just intuitively, Mr. Bruno, I haven't done, not, I've not done that analysis, but, you know, there's a foot of cover minimum, then the structural section on top, that makes it a 7-foot high. I just don't know if we have any more height than that. So, we are prepared, Madam Chairman, to, of course, with the first and the second's concurrence, to allow, or agree to, up to a 5-foot height, segmental box culvert.
With a natural bottom.
That is what, yes, it is by definition, a natural bottom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I thank Commissioner Bruno for raising these two issues. They're important issues, they're good issues. I think they make it a better project, and having heard what Rob Anderson said, I can accept a friendly amendment to add that it would be a segmented box culvert with a maximum height of 5 feet, and the iron fences in the area nearest the, the hot springs area.
I would accept that.
Discussion. Comments? Well, I have to say something. I think this is beautiful, Phil, sorry.
I just want to, Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. John Urb, who's a county transportation engineer, is not here today, but I, when we start making, when we start recommending changes like this, especially to box culvert sizes and shapes and, and spans, I want the commission to understand that that infrastructure gets dedicated to the county for future maintenance. So, there is a trade-off here, and I guess if you're going to make that motion, I would also, I would like to have it considered by staff and, and reviewed by staff in terms of long-term cost of maintenance and replacement, and, I mean, because, because they're right. When, when you talk about bridges, those are inspected by the state on an annual basis. It's, and, and there are requirements we have to maintain, and it's not cheap. So, when we start talking about larger spans and things, while it might be aesthetically pleasing, you got to look at what the impact is to the long-term maintenance cost for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's add to this condition, if feasible. Are you amenable to that language?
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I agree with what Mr. Richter said. We always have to, to rely on the experts for cost analysis, and that information would be valuable when presented to the Board of County Commissioners, if they find there are concerns there.
And once again, it was the conditions of approval, A9, it's a new one, B, small B.
Mark, you agreeable to adding "if feasible"?
Yes, I am.
Case, we have a motion and a second, and my, my comments are, this has been a long hurry. I want to thank everyone for being here, for all the comments, and thank you, Mr. Anderson and your client, for their patience and their agreeability. It is, it is a lovely project. I want to thank staff for all their patience and hard work with this. I have to express my concerns, though. I have issues, and these are longstanding, with alluvial fan development, and East Valley development in general, and you know, this is something that I've been harping on for years. So, unfortunately, I have to stick with that and, and say no to this project. I wish you well, but we'll take a vote. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Ken votes nay. My finding, it was difficult, but I, I have to take the condition of approval, 10, is the closest one that I could come up with. Ken, do you have a finding you couldn't agree with?
The subdivision findings by staff, 20-708, Douglas County Code, I don't believe those findings were met. I believe there should be a buffer zone around that treatment plant. I know the winds blow east to west, and I don't believe the lot sizes are appropriate.
Thank you.
Is it five, did I hear five to two?
Five to two.
Five to two. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we'll take a break for 10 minutes to allow everyone to file out. So, we'll be back at 3:10. It's 3:10. Everybody back in their seats, phones off. Ringers off, please. I will call this meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission back to order. Item number two, for a discussion and possible action, presentation from county staff regarding the purchase of 1766 Red Hawk Lane, APN 122002001-031, and discussion regarding the extinguishment of the conservation easement created under document number 2007-708547, contingent upon closed escrow on aforementioned said property by Douglas County. Jeremy Hutchings presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeremy Hutchings, county engineer, and to my right is Courtney Walker, Stormwater Program Manager. And if you'd like to see one less house in the valley, I've got a deal for you on this project. Quote by Bob Dylan there, for you, for all the arts fans in the, in the audience. So, I'm going to give you a quick overview, and then the overview is, we're trying to just extinguish a conservation easement on a parcel about 19 acres in size, shown in this red border here, that I'm kind of highlighting, and the conservation easement today is represented by the crosshatched area. We're right off East Valley Lane, if you're following Fish Springs out. Fish Springs is at the top of the page, and you bang your right on East Valley, and here's your access to Red Hawk, just to get you oriented. The parcel we're talking about is about 19 acres in size, and here's the parcel number listed. Overarching theme is we're trying to acquire the parcel, remove the conservation easement to basically make it a little bit more unambiguous to what's going on here, and then use it as a flood control facility on the Pineut Creek. Pineut Creek generally flows from the east, westerly across the parcel. Mr. Hames gave me some good advice about trying to distinguish between open space and a conservation easement. So, this is a plan development that did require to have open space. The buildable area is essentially down here for the parcel, and the open space and conservation easement are coincident. The difference generally is, I'm going to paraphrase for as best I can here, and AJ can always jump in, or after I get done my presentation, explaining it a bit further, but open space is just that, no, no building over here, and a conservation easement is another way to make sure that doesn't happen, and that's recorded as a separate document, 2007-708547. The, okay, let's go to the next slide. So, why, why are we doing this? So, here's a, generally, the existing adopted floodplain map. Again, the parcel's shown here in red, and this blue is the primary floodplain with the maps, with it, with the caveat that technically speaking, the developer that did Red Hawk did hire an engineer to adjust the maps to demonstrate that the floodplain wasn't as broad as that. I'll give in that a little bit more detail. We have a subsequent study that doesn't necessarily agree with that, that law mark. But basically, we're trying to do a regional reduction of flooding impacts downstream, and to try to avoid the confusion that the conservation easement may require, is, but the conservation easement's written to Douglas County. We're the beneficiary of that conservation easement. Once we purchase the property, assuming that things go according to my, my plan, I suppose, we, we don't need it anymore. We, we're the dominant estate of that easement, so we dictate what would happen on the, on the parcel versus developer. And you can see here is a great example of the flooding, once it gets down to the Allerman Canal. The Allerman Canal's an irrigation facility that's important to a number of large agricultural facilities, and generally, the upper Allerman, you can kind of see it just faintly right here, and the lower Allerman right here, and when the water comes down and hits essentially, especially the lower Allerman, you can see the lighter tan area where the water kind of branches out, and just becomes uncontrollable at that point. A couple other things to keep in mind as we're going through the presentation, beyond the fact that there's agricultural fields immediately downstream of the canal, there's also residences north of here on, I think it's Reservoir 1, or the Res, that are impacted negatively when the Pineut floods. You can also see down in historic estates, and parts of Chichester not shown on the picture are impacted. And additionally, as a reminder, the county is working on certain, how to say this, so I don't get in trouble with another lawyer, Moeller Parkway is going to be constructed, and their alignment generally is going to be along the downstream end of Pineut Creek. So, anything we can do to help has significant regional benefits. So, let's talk about, real briefly, Pineut Creek. So, here's a, here's an interesting exhibit. The blue line that you can see is the watershed area. The Pineut Creek is about 56 square miles, and it generally flows down into this red area, is kind of where we're talking, is, is down at the end here. The 1% storm, commonly referred to as a 100-year storm, on paper, by today, is generating about a flow of 5,150 cubic feet per second, or a magnitude, the flood of '97, I believe, was around 29,000 CFS, or about 5,000 here. It can also have the potential to produce 6,047 acre feet. We'll talk a little bit more about whether that's right or wrong in another slide. So, let's talk about the problem, more, more visual sense. So, everyone remembers March of 2023, that was this year. So, this is actually after the real flooding. You can see we're just, this is East Valley Road, we're just downstream of the box culverts. And here I am, I believe I took these photos, so I'm standing on East Valley, looking downstream of there. The property we're talking about is generally in here, and also out here, and this next photo will show you a little better. So, here's some, not lakefront at Tahoe property, but lakefront at Red Hawk property, not a great place for, for a house. So, again, East Valley, for frame of reference, is up in here. So, the parcel we're actually looking at is, it's got a lot of water rights. That's a joke, it doesn't have water rights. Here's another parcel at the end of Red Hawk, looking at the flooding. And just to keep in mind, this isn't the 1% storm for the Pineut. We don't, we haven't documented that. So, let's talk about the solution. Pond's not pit, so easy solution is, we're going to dig some holes, and dig lots of holes if you have engineer's way, and I know not everyone agrees with engineers, but that's a simple problem, right? You get flooding, you dig holes, you keep the flooding from coming into town, makes sense. That's not my work crew, that's just from a movie, another, another joke. So, here's what it could look like. We have done some preliminary feasibility status, or status, reports for the project. Again, the parcel that we're talking about is the 19 acres here, and you can see in the blue shaded, generally, the flood, flood map, generally, as we understand it today. And again, this is just concept plans, this isn't a final design, it's just concept, but in general, you can generate about 118 acre feet of volume at a depth of about 15 feet. And just to talk real quick And just to talk real quick about where we stand in the process, so right, the planning commission, the way the conservation easement is written, the planning commission, if we're going to do anything with it, you have to go through the planning commission, then onto the board. So this item isn't really about whether you guys want to acquire the parcel or not, that takes the board action. We're actually just talking about eliminating the conservation easement. And again, the reason for that is we'll own the property at that point. So the conservation easement is really in place to restrict a potential builder right now from building down in the floodplain. So precedent, so if, you know, I was trying to come up with some questions, and we do have a few public comments, I think, at least made in the previous meeting about, hey, is this done before? Yeah, sure. If you're familiar with Windhaven, you can see here, here's a pond, here's a pond, here's a pond, here's also open space, and here's the floodplain. So you see, I'll flip back and forth so you can kind of see, here's the open space and ponds, here's the floodplain, real similar to what we're doing, except we're not doing it in an urban setting, which typically requires open space to be built to a park-like setting. We're doing it in a rural setting, so we would be excavating and reseeding. So background on the solution, so Courtney and I have been working pretty hard over the last couple of years that I've been at the county on a number of different flooding problems. The one that we've done, just wrapped up this past summer, is on the Pine Nut. And so we did retain a consultant to do an analysis to see and identify a regional solution, which is, hey, first thing is, hey, is there any locations that would work to do such basins? And they're kind of identified several of them as you work your way upstream. So our project is down here off of East Valley, but there's a few downstream that would work as well, there's a few upstream that would work as well. What would really work well is what I call the Hutchings High Dam, which is way up in the upper reaches of the watershed, but turns out dams are really expensive, and, you know, we just talked and heard about some public comment in the last item about not maintaining roads. Well, imagine trying to build a dam is pretty expensive, so not maybe as realistic. The blue area you see in this exhibit is basically the floodplain as we actually believe it exists based on two-dimensional modeling, which is a pretty high-end model that engineers run these days, and turns out it's pretty accurate, pretty precise. You can look down here, and you can see this darker blue, you can see the depths over in this thing, you can think back in your mind of the pictures I just showed you, it lines up pretty close, it gets wet down there. The other item that the feasibility report kind of touched on, but we're working on yet another study to address, is the overall flow of the Pine Nut. So right now FEMA has documented that flow of about 5,000 CFS. See if you can hold a couple of numbers in your mind for a second. We have another watershed just to the north of this, it's for the Buckbrush, that Buckeye, I'm sorry, Buckeye Wash, not Buckbrush, Buckeye Wash. That watershed is about 70, 75, 77 square miles and generates 3,000 CFS. Pine Nut today is less size, about 55 square miles, and is recording is 5,000 CFS. So we have another consultant to do another look at that hydrology to see if they can, with good engineering practices, get a lower flow. So we expect a positive result by, I mean positive result, we expected a consultant to come back with a lower flow. So we talked about the upstream story, so that's the background. So we do have a regional study for this solution, we're not just, I mean, picking some parcel to buy that's like a guy that I golf with or something. It's actually identified in the feasibility study, and we do have, have contact the owner in your packet, you'll see a letter of intent in a contract, draft contract for sale, so that is in there. Not, again, I'm just saying that to give you the overall picture. We do have a seller that's interested in selling to us. So let's circle back to our actual item. As a reminder, this is our parcel, the 19-acre parcel. Shaded in this blue area is the existing open space and the conservation easement, which we're trying to extinguish. And also bring to mind or to your attention is, if you follow my cursor right here in red, this is already a drainage easement, it says for exfiltration basin, implying that something's going to get constructed here, and it overlaps the existing conservation easement. So even today, those two things are not at odds together. Conservation easements can have basins in them, in my opinion. So that's the ask, we want to extinguish the conservation easement over this, it's not really needed once we become the dominant estate. And that would remove any ambiguity about being able to build a basin would be the intent. But put that aside for a minute, let's say we never built the basin for either costs or concerns from the public or what have you. Acquiring the parcel would essentially put that parcel in the hands of Douglas County, and our current flood models show that this area isn't inundated by the primary floodplain. So that'd be taking one more parcel out of play that would potentially get developed in the valley. You don't see that whole off, very often in the valley, usually we hear, they're the other way, right? Like the last item, we're adding parcels. The other item wasn't in the floodplain, but they are adding parcels, we're trying to take one off the table. So today, if you look at this map before I take to the next slide, the buildable area is about six acres, including here, this is on a hillside, it's not super buildable, but it technically not, you could do it. But if the county required it, we'd actually be expanding the amount of open space, publicly, public open space, by about twice. So right now, the existing open space is a little under nine acres, and if we acquire the parcel, it would be at just under 19 acres. So we're actually expanding the amount of open space in the valley, which most people like. So I tried to come up with a list of pros and cons. The pros, I think, of cover removes ambiguity, potentially could reduce negative impacts from flooding to different homes and agricultural fields and public infrastructure like Moller Parkway, increase public access, one less home in the valley and in the floodplain. The cons, I'm not sure I really understand all the cons, but maybe you could say, well, the open space is not as well protected, and hey, what if the use changes in the future? So I tried to come up with some rebuttals. So open space not being protected, well, really, there's only, now let's just say nine acres of open space today. If we acquire the parcel, we could not allow that, you know, we wouldn't build a house on it, the county typically doesn't do that, and that open space expands actually to 19 acres. So the what if, you know, what if time passes, you know, anybody that cares about the project retires or hits the lotto, goes to, you know, Mexico? You know, how do you guarantee that open space is protected? You could further de-disstrict it to say, hey, we're not going to do a house here down on this parcel, even once the county acquires it and owns it, you could do that. I'm not sure if it's entirely necessary, but you could. Got the recommended motion to prove the extinguishment of the conservation easement by contingent upon close of escrow of the parcel. So if we don't close on it, you should not, we should not be extinguishing that conservation easement, because the person that owns it could still build a house. Happy to answer any questions, best to my ability.
Questions? Bryce?
Thank you, Jeremy. You kind of addressed, my biggest concern is that conservation easements are pretty serious, and they're intended to be put in place and stay there. And so I guess my biggest concern is that the county acquires, we vacate the conservation easement, the county acquires it, some point in the future, the county sells that to a private developer, and it's no longer conserved. So I guess I'd like to figure out some way to where that cannot happen, and, because I don't want to see that happen in the county going forward down the road. When we could, when the conservation easement is put in place, the intent is for it to stay there and not have some future county employees or planning commission or somebody else changing uses, and at some whim, now we start eliminating conservation easements, you know, one by one. So, you know, how would we go about doing that?
Right, so that would be the de-dis restriction we could place on ourselves once we own the parcel. We could work with the DA's office, I think, to develop language restrictive enough to allow what, from an engineering perspective, I would like to see done in flood control. You saw what happened in the last March, I think this is an excellent spot for it. It's not, it's not in conflict with open space, I've shown you examples of that. So you could de-disstrict it to say, hey, no homes on this parcel, and then expand that out even further than what you see today. And we could do that if we owned it, we can't do it now, it's as you see it today. So we could make that happen, and...
Yeah, I completely agree that it's well-intended, and I agree with the premise of why you're doing it, and I couldn't agree more with it. I just don't, you know, today, it makes perfect sense, you have the right intentions, the county has the right intentions, I just don't want 10 years from now, 20 years from now, somebody else to have the wrong intentions.
Right.
And because of some well-intended decision we made today had some unintended consequences later, so I'm in favor of creating some sort of restriction that prohibits that from happening in the future.
AJ?
This is AJ Hames from the DA's office, for the record. I did just want to speak just for a moment to conservation easements. Those are typically, well, they are governed by our NRS, it's NRS Section 111, and many times when a conservation easement is put into place, it is not revocable. It stays in place forever and accomplishes the purposes that you're worried about, and many of them are written that way. But in NRS 111, it specifically does allow for a conservation easement to have an extinguishment clause. And this particular conservation easement that we're discussing does have an extinguishment clause in it. And in order for it to be extinguished, I'll just read that clause, just so we're all on the same page. It's paragraph 13 of that conservation easement, it says, "If circumstances arise in the future which render the purposes of this grant, the purposes, the purpose of this grant and the conservation easement impractical or impossible to accomplish," and I think what Jeremy's indicating today is that the conservation easement is become, has become impractical in that it does not serve its purpose, which is at least in part to mitigate flood danger. And so by removing it to put a flood mitigation facility in place, that would better achieve one of the purposes of the easement. This grant and conservation easement may be extinguished only in one of two following ways. A, after public hearing and approval by the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners, which is the path that we're currently on, or B, by a court of competent jurisdiction. So this specific conservation easement does allow for extinguishment if approved by the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And to make that approval, the board should determine whether or not the circumstances that have arisen have rendered the purpose of the conservation easement impractical or impossible to accomplish.
Thank you. And we're still able, though, to place some sort of restriction on that, or are we not?
Yeah, ultimately, what this planning commission has jurisdiction over because of the terms of the conservation easement is, the board can vote to approve the extinguishment of that easement. The board doesn't have a say in whether or not the county chooses to purchase the property, but could recommend, as, just to the Board of County Commissioners, as a condition of that purchase, that they purchase it subject to a deed restriction requiring that it be used for flood mitigation and open space purposes only. It wouldn't be something that this commission would have the authority to impose, but it could be a recommendation.
Paul?
AJ, consistent with Bryce's concerns and Jeremy's comments, why not as an additional condition of why we recommend the removal of the conservation easement is precisely because there can be a deed restriction to the benefit of the county, that there be no building on that parcel, or, you know, to really nail it down, not just a house, but any building or development on that parcel in the future. And then, once that's recorded, and correct me if I'm wrong, that becomes, that gives the permanence Bryce desired and Jeremy spoke of.
AJ Hames from the DA's office, yeah, certainly that would be, that would achieve the purpose. What I would recommend would be a recommendation that the condition be that it be used only for open space and flood mitigation purposes, because I think that encompasses what we're attempting to do with this parcel.
Yes, because we don't want any structure of any kind. Other comments? Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick questions for, I think, AJ and Jeremy. On your circling back that you've got up there now, am I correct that the area that we're not dealing with is lots one, two, and four? And it seems to me there's a home on lot number two and four?
So Jeremy Hutchings, are you just dealing with lot one? This is lot one?
Right.
So that's what we're dealing with?
So we're not dealing with lot number two and not number three, and lot number three, there's a home, and lot number four across on Red Hawk is also a home?
Correct.
And AJ, am I correct that this is a simple acquisition? It's not a approval of any sort of project, so there's no noticing required to any of the homeowners in the vicinity, is that correct?
Well, correct. The approval of the project would come at a later time, but just to clarify again, what we're doing today in this hearing is not even approving the purchase, it's just a vote of approval with regard to the conservation easement.
Thank you. And then Jeremy, in your professional opinion, would there be any harm caused to any of the homeowners in the vicinity, or would this actually be a benefit to them?
No, in my professional opinion, there's, it's a benefit. In fact, one other thing I'd point out, we're struggling right now with the owner that just built here, and he did file an elevation certificate as required, but he didn't get it state during construction or before construction, it's too low. And so this would help him, and some of the owners are, part owners of the, and you see it in the letter of intent, are residences here as well, so they're in favor, as far as I can tell, and I haven't seen any actual public comment from them.
Thank you. My last observation is the last two pages of our packet, Jeremy, your memo on page 476 and 477, that's probably the best presentation that I've seen in a long time, very concise, very thorough, very informative. My only caution to you is on the bottom of page 476, if you've got some sharp eyes at the Board of County Commissioners, when they see $7.6 million for improvement costs, they might raise an eyebrow or two, so prepare yourself.
I'm prepared.
Thank you very much, excellent job, we appreciate it. Thank you, Courtney, too.
David?
Yeah, nobody's talked about the value of this, so I'm going to do that at this point. Having been an appraiser in the past and a lot of experience in real estate, I took a good look at this appraisal, and I think it's pretty well done. I've seen some of the ones that we've approved in the past that were not, but this one seems to be really pretty good appraisal. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I'd like to open the public hearing. Please come to the microphone, sign the roster, and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, Mimi Mossman in resident. I've reviewed the documentation provided for the planning commission consideration and offered the following comments. What the county engineer and district attorney's office have failed to do is correctly identify that the property is actually zoned RA5, planned development overlay zone, and based on that zoning, has specific development standards that apply when the PD zone was established in 2005, along with the subdivision map. The purpose of the PD overlay zone was to allow special planning considerations, that is, in this case, allowing the clustering of smaller lots, less than the minimum five acre, due to the site containing topographic and environmental constraints, that constraints, which is the special flood hazard area, the 100-year floodplain, following Pine Nut Creek, which is a blue line stream. County staff has also failed to identify that the future use of lot one is a flood control basin that is 15 feet in depth, approximately 1,000 feet in length, and 500 feet in width, with a volume capacity... with a volume capacity of 118 acre feet, does not meet the provisions of the PD established in 2005. That is, to maintain the open space easement identified under the conservation easement, quote, "by protecting and preserving in perpetuity scenic and open views across the protected property and to preserve the existing natural condition of the protected property." Further, quote, "the conservation environmental values of the protected property be preserved and maintained by the designation of the protected property as open space on the map and by the restriction of the protected property to only such uses as are consistent with open space and conservation areas." If the county engineer came to me today as a community development director and asked if the intended flood basin is consistent with the development standards established under the PD, I would advise them that it would be considered an intensification of development from what the original approval identified, and that the only way to consider construction of the basin within the conservation easement is to follow County Code Title 20, Chapter 20.676.110, PD revision procedure, and NRS Section 278A.410, which sets forth the process to allow for the modification of the plan as it relates to Lot 1. County Code requires a public hearing by the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners before any revisions to the plan is allowed. In my opinion, the steps taken by county staff to date should actually follow the required revision to the PD. If the Planning Commission were to take action at this time, that action would likely set a precedent for agencies to acquire other open space conservation easements for flood control structures within established planned developments, likely circumventing the purpose and intent of open space conservation easements county-wide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good? Okay, sorry. Hope, first, hello. Hi. Thank you all for serving on the Planning Commission. My name's Hope Sullivan. I live in East Valley. Page 313 of your packet states the purpose of the open space conservation easement. It's protecting and preserving in perpetuity scenic open views and preserve the existing natural condition. That's pretty boilerplate. We see that a lot. Page 323 of your packet talks about how to extinguish this easement. You have a public hearing, and then you have to render the purpose of this easement impractical and impossible to accomplish. Think about that. If this finding's made, how is any open space conservation easement in this county protected? But the real reason I came to talk to you today is about due process. The easement being considered for extinguishment was created under the framework of PD 05011. Condition 16 of that PD required a recorded deed that establishes an open space conservation easement over 8.74 acres of Lot 1. The associated staff report references that the portion of the property in the A flood zone will be set aside as open space. State law tells you how to amend a PD. The Douglas County Code tells you how to amend the PD. Essentially, you follow the same process you follow for any PD. It's a do-over. The modification of this property from passive open space to a 15-foot-deep basin is a significant change, and I don't believe it meets the requirements of your open space requirements in the PD section of the code. This change should be reviewed under the framework of the PD, including the quantitative and qualitative requirements for open space. You just reviewed a PD, and you got a lot of public comment. In your packet, there were a lot of mailing labels. That shows you there was due process. People were notified. This wasn't out in the newspaper. In four years, well, first, let's go back to what you just did. You included a condition of approval for a deed restriction about driveways on Vicki. In four years, if someone comes forward and says, gee, how do I get rid of that deed restriction? They can get an answer. But that deed restriction was considered under the framework of the PD. It needs to be reviewed as part of the PD. What you are doing today will set a precedent on how other open space conservation easements created through a PD are addressed from a procedural due process manner. Please table the action on this extinguishment until you can review it under the procedures associated with the modification of the PD. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Greenley, East Valley resident as well. I've got some great concerns over the precedent that you're proposing to set right here on extinguishing this easement. I believe you're going to see a lot of additional parcels come before you and PDs in other areas that they're going to look at this as saying, well, you did it here, why can't you do it here? And to reiterate some of the points that have already been made, I believe staff has not provided, in the packet that I reviewed, some additional information today, but has not provided all the information that you need to look at this and make a, make a decision. They did not provide any information on the PD action of the previous Planning Commission and Board when they approved this particular development. They did not provide any information on why that was set aside, how important the previous Planning Commission and governing board found that easement and that, that easement to be. And I think you need to take a look at that before you approach this process. And as previously been mentioned, the open space conservation easement is a high standard that they put on that particular piece of property. And as mentioned by the district attorney or deputy district attorney, he quoted that. But I'd also like to reiterate that it's impractical or impossible to accomplish before you can pull that easement off. That's right into the recorded parcel of this subdivision here. I think those are pretty powerful words, and those need some very powerful reasons to pull that easement off. It's been existing before any of us were ever here. It's going to be existing before any of us, or after any of us are here, if we don't touch it. We're acting like it's something that's, oh, it's just in the way, we don't want it, it's inconvenient, it doesn't deserve any consideration. The Planning Commission before you did, before you considered it important, the governing board, or the Board of Commissioners considered it important, that's why they put it as part and parcel of this. And as has been recommended, I recommend you vote no on this proposal, or at least table it until a different day before, until you can get proper information on this. I don't think you're getting the full, full package right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live in the East Valley area. My property shares a 600-foot property line with a conservation easement. I have lived at this property for 25 years. We were very active in the meetings when the developer wanted two and three-acre lots where a five-acre minimum was required. They were allowed the two and three-acre lots because they created the open space conservation easement. Our house is 30 feet from the conservation easement, and we enjoy the views of the natural area. The concept of conservation easements is very good. It sets aside land that will forever be set aside for the enjoyment of the Carson Valley community. It leaves the easement in a natural state for perpetuity, as stated in the planned community documents. We should not take lightly the illumination of conservation easements. There are alternatives which should be considered before the illumination of the easements. It should go through the process so that we all, all of the neighbors are informed and can participate in the meetings. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Hogan, do you share a property line with this easement? Does he share a property line with this easement? Okay, thank you.
Do you want it? Or what do you want?
Do you share a property line with this easement?
No, I'm talking with another one. That's been also
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
My name is Gretchen Garen. I live in East Valley and have been there with my husband for the past six years. Our property shares a property line with the required open space conservation easement at Grand View Estates. Like the Grand View Estates open space conservation easement, the Spring Creek open space conservation easement is a requirement of the planned development. The open space conservation easement should not be considered for any modification unless and until you are looking at the planned development, which would require a hearing for any modification or extinguishment per Douglas County Code. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the record, Jeannie Shizuru, the comments made before are going to be much better than mine. I had a situation a few months ago where they were going to try to put an RV park on Highway 395 across from Ruin Stroth, near the Riverview Mobile Home Park, and the Parks and Recreation Department paid $10,000 to Wood Rogers to make a recommendation of putting in this RV park, which they gladly did. And I researched the history of this property where they were going to put the RV park. There was a conservation easement on it. In 2003, somebody bought that property for, unusable property, for $60,000, and then sold it two years later to the county and the state for $360,000 and put a conservation easement on it. But then 18 years later, this idea of an RV park comes in, and nobody knows that. I didn't actually get the documentation from the DA's office until after the item had been heard by the Parks and Recreation Department and turned down. So I'm sitting in the audience just thinking, well, these conservation easements are very clear and simple, what they're supposed to represent, what is the history of them, et cetera. But in listening to the twists and turns of, and especially about this PD overlay, but the twists and turns of, we could do this, and we could do that, and make sure we put that in the, in the contract, I'm kind of horrified because it seems like our county can't even keep track of conservation easements that cost the state and the county a really pretty penny. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Seeing no one rise, I have a closed public comment. Are there any more comments or discussion between the commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I'd like to hear from AJ what he thinks about the correct procedural process. Are we going through the correct process, or do we have to notice this to the other landowners that are around the existing conservation easement?
AJ Hames from the DA's office, for the record. So reference was made to Section 110 of our code, which deals with the revision procedures. That's in Chapter 676 of Title 20. And that basically, well, I'll just read it, and then we're all, we're on the same page. A public hearing by the Planning Commission and Board is required before revisions to the plan, I was talking about the planned development, which involve changes in land use, expansion, or intensification of development, or changes in the standards of development may be approved. So as a general rule, if you're going to change the planned development such that you would either be changing the land use, expanding or intensifying development, or changing the standards of development, you're supposed to have a public hearing. Says, "The Director will determine on a case-by-case basis those instances when a revision to the development plan is necessary, following the same procedure as the original application." Changes in the approved development plan, which do not involve changes in, and these are the same items, land use, expansion, or intensification of development, or changes in the standards of development, may be approved by the Director if the changes are consistent with the purposes, character, and conditions of the development plan. So if there's minor changes that don't deal with land use, expansion, or modification of development, or changes in standards of development, those can be approved by the Director. If they do involve one of those changes, those are supposed to be brought to the board at a public meeting, which of course would be noticed like any other public meeting. If there's not a change to a planned development, then none of this would even apply. And so our position coming into this meeting was ultimately what was approved was open space. There is a difference between a conservation easement and open space. You can remove a conservation easement and still ensure open space, so there would not be a change to the planned development required in this case. And so therefore, these revision procedures would not apply.
We are making a change by removing a lot.
Yeah, AJ Hames from the DA's office. The, the lot itself is still part of the development and is still, according to the development agreement, required to be open space. And so it's, it's still subject to the PD. It's just owned by the county and used as open space and flood mitigation.
Another question that was brought up is that we were setting precedent. Are we? Or will everything be taken on a case-by-case basis should this come up again?
AJ Hames again for the record. I think the worry is the county's going to be digging a basin here. And what will happen in my neighborhood with my conservation easement? What if the county wants to dig a giant pit to, you know, I don't know, just a huge, like the Bing pit, for example? Could the county then justify that? And I would say certainly there's, within the conservation easement, there are certain things which are allowed and not allowed, and the same thing applies with open space. For example, if you had a conservation easement, I don't think anyone would argue that putting a bench in the area would even violate the conservation easement. Same with paths. I think generally people agree that paths would not violate a conservation easement. The same rules apply to open space. At the other end of the spectrum, you've got a gigantic gravel pit, for example, which probably is not open space at that point. It's more of like an industrial use of the property. It's now being used as a gravel pit, basically. And the ditch itself, or the, the basin, might be too deep to even access. And so somewhere in the middle, you have what's being proposed here. And as Jeremy indicated in his presentation, this is not inconsistent with other uses of open space in the county where we have flood mitigation facilities like ponds and things. We had an example of Wind Haven, which has a number of ponds. Those are ponds that are always full. This would be a little bit different because this would be only used when floodwaters are running, and the rest of the time it would just be natural desert landscape. In that case, it might be more similar to, if you're familiar with it, there's a dog park by Walmart that is a flood detention facility, but it's also a park. You can enter it, and you can go down into it and walk your dog, and it's landscaped in grass. This wouldn't be landscaped because it's in a rural area as opposed to an urban area, but the idea is the same. And so this, the county's position, and it's, and it's my position, that this is, this proposed use is consistent with our requirements for open space that apply to planned developments, and arguably is consistent also with the conservation easement. To be safe, we're coming to the board to ask that the conservation easement be extinguished so that that portion of it is no longer a consideration. Instead, the county would only be guided by whether or not the use is consistent with open space. That would be the only consideration and guideline. So that was a very long answer to your question, but if you have a follow-up, I'd be happy to answer more questions, but.
David.
I guess I have to go back to my own experience, and I have to admit, in selling real estate, I probably have told people in the past, don't
Instead, the county would only be guided by whether or not the use is consistent with open space. That would be the only consideration and guideline. So that was a very long answer to your question, but if you have a follow-up, I'd be happy to answer more questions, but.
David?
I guess I have to go back to my own experience, and I have to admit, in selling real estate, I probably have told people in the past, don't worry about that piece of land. It's a conservation easement. Nothing will happen to it. I would vote to table this until we get a much better feeling on what we're really doing here. It seems like there's a lot of questions that really are still unanswered.
Other questions? Comments? Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would concur with Commissioner Nelson. You know, but for a tabling of this, I would be inclined to vote against the motion, just because I don't feel that a deed restriction, it just doesn't have the teeth that a conservation easement has. And I just feel like there's unintended consequences here that may not be clear. And I think there needs to be some more time to vet through this and just really make sure that we're making the right decision here. And so if we're not able to table it, then I would be inclined to vote against it.
Paul?
I am satisfied that we can provide the protections necessary with respect to the open space easement on a deed, which should be recommended as part of this transaction at this hearing. In other words, that we're not changing the status of the property, but we are, to be fair, expanding the potential use to have it dug out and used as a flood retention facility. And I don't see a difficulty with respect to the procedure or the ultimate use in terms of the definition of open space.
Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I come down somewhere in the middle between Dave and Bryce and then what Paul was saying. And I want to acknowledge the contributions of Mimi Moss and Hope Sullivan. They were valuable staff members. In fact, Mimi probably taught me everything I learned in my first year on the Planning Commission, so they've made some important points. But I do agree with A.J., and I think Jeremy and Courtney have done an excellent job. My overriding view is that we're trying to look for the bigger picture, and the bigger picture, I think, is very important not to lose sight of the flood control issues. But I guess I'd probably come down in a situation of abundance of caution and agree that if we table this, we might get a little bit more definitive information of what we should do and how we can protect both this land and other land in the future.
See, I disagree. You know, I'm all about open space and conservation. And I've given this a lot of thought, and I serve with hope on SLUPAC, the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council. And I live in Windhaven, by the way. And I do see this as a greater good, and I am really cautious about Grand View and what they may experience or may not experience with the issues they have in the East Valley and their sensitivity to gravel mining and painted rock and other things. But there is a greater good to be served here. The people out in Fish Springs have had problems with flooding. We're going to be coming up at, if the predictions are true, on another very wet winter. And we have an opportunity here to have a basin dug, the fill be taken away for free. We have the land being purchased. We have a natural basin. We have willing sellers. We have so many opportunities right now. We have this sitting here for us. It needs to be deepened. They're going to replant with sagebrush and desert peach. It's going to be usable for the public to explore, to play in. I think with this comprehensive report, with all the investigation that staff has done, with the district attorney's report, with community development's report, all the information is there for us. And if I didn't feel so strongly about it, I would be on the table and I would say, hmm, let's wait. But I do believe we have the information, and I endorse this project. And you know how I am about conservation easements. And I believe putting a deed restriction in perpetuity to restrict all construction of anything, we're just talking about semantics between a conservation easement and open space, is basically with the restrictions we're putting on the property. That's the way I feel about it. Bryce?
Madam Chair, I think you and I are saying the same things. I think that how we get there is just kind of, is the difference. I think there are other opportunities or ways in which we can deal with flood mitigation and not abandon a conservation easement. And so that's the concern for me. There definitely is a flood mitigation issue in that area of the county. You know, my father lives right up the road. It's a real big concern. And I just don't think, I'm not there in terms of how we're going about doing it versus the need to do it. To me, they're not mutually exclusive. I think we need to figure out how to do it. I just don't agree that this is the way in which to do it.
Ken?
There's so many variables here. The whole design of possible basins looks good. This basin doesn't seem very large, like it would do much, as far as I'm concerned, after the flood of last year. Maybe it'll help mitigate some of it, but we'll probably need the entire basin's plan completed to actually help with the flooding in the area. I liked Jeremy's idea of the dam. We could use that to save water. And so that's where I'm at.
This is a baby step. This is one in a series. Right, Jeremy?
Just, yeah, right. I'd also point out, so I think I'm hearing as to concerns with, things I should keep in mind as well is timing. This is a privately held parcel. They have a lever intent. It does have a clock on it. Not to sway, just putting it out there as information. Mr. Paxton, you mentioned about, let's do the whole thing. Yeah, you betcha. I want to do that dam. That is that absolute answer, but it does cost a lot of money. So what you find when you get into the public sector is you do what you can where you are with what you have and as they present themselves. So when, yeah, 118 acre feet isn't going to solve the whole problem, but it's going to help, and it's going to pick up a lot of these smaller storms that are more frequent. So you do what you can when it's serendipitous, and it happens to be serendipitous. We got a willing buyer. We've just had a bad flood. We're trying to reduce the flows, which will make even a smaller parcel more impactful. So I just throw that out there. But I understand your concerns. And I wish I had the $40 million for the Hutchings Dam, but we can't even fund road maintenance right now, apparently, so.
Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. NRS 111.410, so it's 111, 410. Definitions of an easement for conservation means a non-presensory interest in a holder of, in real property, which imposes limitations or affirmative obligations, and A retains and protects the natural scenic or open space values of real property. B assures the availability of real property for agriculture, forest, recreational, or open space use, protects natural resources, maintains or enhances the quality of air or water, or E preserves the historical, architectural, or archaeological, paleonological, or cultural aspects of the real property. So the thought process behind this is that we have an area that is being, it was located in conservation to preserve the floodplain. Another model has been generated since that flood model was generated during the PD. The flood boundary exceeds the area of even the parcel itself, and that particular area location in the Pine Net Wash had done some pretty huge amounts of damage to the irrigation system that is what's known as the Allerman Canal or the Upper Allerman. The Upper Allerman is totally filled in with sand today. It's caused a lot of damage for that. They use the Upper Allerman for storm drainage diversion around the pond one, which is located just north of Toller Lane there, and that was used in the Danberg Ranch operation. And that ditch system was totally inundated in sand this season as well. Maintenance of this, and I don't know, Jeremy, do you know if we're going to go forward and do a revised model once, well, once the pond gets constructed? We will do a new floodplain analysis and theoretically would bring those parcels that are back in the floodplain from this latest model, would bring those out of the floodplain. And this is the first step of many parcels that we are looking at as far as just control of runoff, stormwater runoff coming out of the pine nuts. We've built in everywhere else outside of these areas, and the conservation easements are there. So if you guys do not believe that a conservation easement can have a detention facility in it, there would be, that's the structure, I guess, that would be incorporated, is the excavation of the grade that's there on site today to develop a basin. Courtney has just done that up in BLM, lands above Johnson Lane, and we can bring back some photos of what those look like, if that'd be helpful to you, you know, to make these decisions and see if that's appropriate. I don't have a problem with modifying the PD, but we, like Jeremy said, we do have some, a time constraint with the offer, and that's the approach we took with this. So I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Bryce?
So just for clarity, A.J., I guess I need to, I really need to get my head around that a deed restriction for flood mitigation in open space would be in perpetuity.
A.J. Haynes from the DA's office. You could recommend whatever you wanted. So you could place a perpetual restriction on the property. It would be a recommendation. This board isn't purchasing the property or authorizing the purchase at this point.
Other questions? Comments? Mark?
No, I think that this is a, this is very much needed. I am a little concerned that noticing didn't go out to lot holder number two that's right on there, but I heard from Jeremy that this is going to benefit his property. So, and based on A.J.'s recommendation, I think that this is a good plan.
We need a motion?
I recommend the Planning Commission approve the extinguishment of the conservation easement on APN 122002001031, which was created under document number 2007-708547, contingent upon the close of escrow of the aforementioned property. And I'd also like to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners look at placing a similar deed restriction once they've acquired the property.
Are you adding a restriction for no structures, a condition for no structures in perpetuity?
Yes, I would add that in.
I'll second it with a question to A.J., if I may. A.J., when the deed restriction is formulated for recommendation, could you participate? Because in my thinking, I suppose I could draft one, but I think that the Board of Commissioners should see what kind of restriction should be placed upon the property in accordance with our recommendation.
A.J. Haynes from the DA's office for the record. We will work to draft up a model recommended deed restriction prior to presentation to the board.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion by Mark, a second by Paul. Discussion, Bryce?
So just to be clear on the motion, so the motion is what's, the recommended motion presented by staff, and that recommended the Board of County Commissioners that there be a perpetual deed restriction for open space and flood mitigation only. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, you had something to say?
In other words, Madam Chair, when we were talking about structures, the three of us, we were talking about buildings, not excavations as a structure.
Yes, no sheds, no tents, no, nothing.
Open.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Again, I just, so it's perpetual and deed restriction for flood mitigation and open space only. Correct, Mark?
Could we reread this?
A.J.?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I could, it's the motion, it's the motion presented by staff with that attitude. Is that correct?
A.J. Haynes for the record, as I understood it, yes, it was the motion as presented and as written in your packet with an additional condition, that the, that a recommendation be presented to the Board of County Commissioners, that the property be purchased, subject to a deed restriction, restricting use of the property to open space and flood mitigation purposes only in perpetuity.
Okay, clear. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those against? Motion passes. Six ayes. David Bodine.
Yeah, I won't vote to extinguish any.
There we go. I won't vote to extinguish any conservation easement.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy, Courtney, A.J., Tom. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Your comments are well-taken. I will now open for closing public comment. Yes, please.
Hope Sullivan. Let me tell you what's happening and why my neighbors and I are here. And we never asked, we never said a negative thing about flood control. We asked for transparency and for amending a PD so that there would be notification. A couple months ago, maybe it was a couple weeks ago, my neighbors went to a public meeting on the Buckeye Creek flood control basin, only to discover it's the open space at Grand View. You want to know what's proposed? 40 feet deep. You want to know the size? I'm not going to tell you the size. I'm going to describe it. It goes from Minden Me to Bank of America. It goes from 395 to County Road. No, thank you. We will not be notified when that comes forward because that's open space, right? We don't care. People buy land near a golf course. They buy land near a lake. They buy land near open space. There's a value to open space. A 15-foot basin is not open space. Read the PD code where it describes the open space. It says recreational amenities, and that lists the environmental amenities. That's what just happened. That's why we're here. And now we have to recognize that the open- that the open space that we thought was protected and that we bought our houses and we enjoy, nobody cares. It is, what are our words, impractical and impossible. And I apologize. I appreciate your volunteers. But we have tried to be so respectful and to the process and to what the staff is proposing as project proponents. And we asked for something that I think was right, for notification. It's in the framework of a PD, and you didn't see it that way. And again, thank you for your service, and I apologize for my frustration.
Thank you, Hope.
For the record, Dan Greenlee. I've been out in the East Valley area for 35-plus years. I've been off and on into Planning Commission meetings, Board meetings, depending on what the particular item is. And I said this to a couple of Board Commissioners, if you don't like what's going on, the staff will change the rules in perpetuity. A wonderful word until somebody says, that's getting in the way of my business. That's getting in the way of what I want to do. The next group of people coming up here, sitting in your chairs, are going to say, those people didn't know what they had going on. They don't know what they're doing. And you are setting a precedent. You will be snatching up these conservation easements in this valley, left, right, and center. It's already been identified, behind our houses. Our property, our value of land, our quality of life is in the toilet if that goes through on Grand View. And this is setting the precedent for you to go ahead and say that, that just doesn't count. And this idea of putting it on a deed restriction in perpetuity, that's already in the language, and you've decided to ignore that. Why? Because you can't. You think you're better and smarter than the previous Planning Commission. You're better and smarter than anything else. And the greater good tells me that I've been out there for 35 years. I just got to suck it up when this comes to you with the Grand View. And it will. It's going to come down the pike. It will come to you again. And that is frustrating. I try to be respectful. I try to be by the book. And I look at their things. I can read this. I'm a hydrologist by profession. I understand the concerns of this community. I've seen flooding in here lots and lots of times. But it shouldn't be addressed by extinguishing easements like this. These are legal documents that you're just simply saying, ah, too bad. We just don't like it. It's getting in the way. I'm sorry, you're wrong.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Mimi Moss. For the last item, where were the homeowners that live within the Spring Creek PD? Where were they today to speak to this item? They weren't here. The reason why? They were never notified. That's what we're talking about is due process. When you're in a plan development, it's completely different. And the examples that the district attorney gave are wrong. None of those projects are in a PD. PD is a standard above a regular subdivision. And the people that buy into that subdivision have some reliance on what's going to happen to that open space, conservation, whatever it's set up in the future. For the, for the county engineer to say that that value is not going to change, he's not an appraiser. He doesn't have the ability to tell you that. You ask those property owners, I, I ask you, talk to the landowners within the Spring Creek PD and see what they say. See if they want a 15-foot-deep basin next to them or across the street. That's what we were asking for today, is ask for the standard due process for a plan development, bring it forward as a revision, notify the property owners, say they know what's going on in their neighborhood, and therefore in the future, they can agree or disagree whether it's going to be a basin or not. If the landowner in the early stages came forward in 2005 and asked to put a flood basin there, it could have been considered as part of the plan development and approved that way. Then when the homeowners came in and bought their lots, they would know, they would expect something there, a large basin. Today, they expect a natural, natural topography, Pine Net Creek, however it meanders through the property. That's their expectation. And to say that's not an intensification of use is wrong. And I challenge the district attorney's office to review that. Because when it comes in front of the board, you're going to have more than six or seven people here in the audience. You're going to have every property owner within every plan development subdivision that has conservation easement and open space to argue the same point. Due process is so important. I worked for the county for 24 years. I know the importance of that. So I, you already made your decision. That's going to go forward to the board. But we're not done with this because it sets a precedent. I just, I just want you to understand that your actions are going to change things in the future, not for the better, for the worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else rise, I will close public comment and reserve comment to the Planning Commission. I would like to say that last week, Bryce, Kirk, and I attended the Critical Issues Conference up at the Tahoe Blue Events Center. And next week, the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association will have their conference from the 16th through the 18th. And our own Tom Delaire will be making a presentation on the transfer of development rights at the SLU-PAC meeting on the 18th. And we're looking forward to it. They've been trying to get a presentation on TDRs for years, as I understand it. So finally, we're going to have it. Any other comments from Planning Commission? No? Thank you all. Thank you, staff, for a wonderful meeting. And thank you to the public for all your comments. I will close this meeting at 3:20, or 4:26.